This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was sorted to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the planning board secretary. Fire exits are located on the eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or any other device to kindly put it in silent mode for the duration of the meeting. As a reminder, this meeting is also being recorded by AP TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, 20th of May, 2019. Councilwoman Evans, please.
Here.
Mr. Dillmore?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Trudy Seigba?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Cuthbert?
Here. There are a couple of things I'd just like to go over before we get started. I did this last time, and I'd like to do it again if, for those that maybe were not here. During this, just to give you some idea of process, what's going to happen is that there's, there's going to be some presentations by the professionals for this application. The public will get a chance to ask questions. After all that is finished, after all the presentations are finished, you have an opportunity to ask a question of, about the topic that was presented, and only about the topic that was presented. If you have a chance to go to the microphone one time, if, if your questions are repetitive, I will state so, in the interest of moving things forward. But everyone will have a chance to speak and ask questions if they, if they would like. After all the presentations are finished, then this is, I'm assuming, not going to be tonight. There will be a time when there is public comment that will be allowed, that you can state your feelings about the, the project itself. That is not, that most likely will not be tonight. Maybe it will be. I'm, 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 I'm not hopeful. But anyway, so the, the public comment time, that's once again, that, that's a, that's a three-minute limit on public comment, and we, we ask throughout this whole process to please be mindful and not be repetitive in your questions and comments. We, we, everything is being recorded, it's in the transcripts, so please, I'm, I'm, I will have to stop people that are repeating the same questions. The other thing that, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. The other question I have is that, from our fire official, is anybody outside waiting to get in?
No.
That there's no room?
No.
No? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion for a, to allow for a three-minute comment on this application with the, with the discretion of the planning board if they would like to extend that three minutes.
Second.
Explain that to me.
What that means is that, what that means is that if we get to the, to the comment section, that the public will have three minutes to state their comment.
Three minutes to state a comment?
Yes.
No limit to cross-examine?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay?
Officer?
Hi.
Okay. All right. The next item, sorry?
Just so that we understand, the way, just a little more clarification on the procedure. This, this is a contested matter, okay? So, the way this will work is the applicant will conclude their case. Objectors' counsel will cross-examine witnesses, other people will cross-examine witnesses. Once that case is, once the applicant has concluded their case, I, based on emails I've seen, the objectors' counsel has every intention of calling witnesses. So then it will proceed to, no different than a trial, okay? So you'll have, applicant goes first, objectors will go second, and then if there's, after all that's said and done, if there's no need to recall any witnesses from either side, then it will typically deliberate and vote on that. And as the chairwoman has said, it's extremely unlikely that's all going to be placed tonight. I, I don't envision that picking place at all. That's the way, that's the procedure.
Okay, and now, if we go to the, the agenda, the approval of the minutes for May 29?
Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Officer?
Hi.
Okay, if we can move forward, then we have Asbury Partners to come up.
Thank you.
And start the process.
For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I am here tonight on behalf of Asbury Partners to continue the hearing concerning the beach club located at Block 4502, Lot 1.23. I have a few housekeeping items before we bring up our first, or I guess our second witness, but our first this evening. First, in response to comments that we heard at the first meeting and after meeting with the board's professionals, we did submit revised plans on June 14. Those plans were submitted to the, the planning board secretary. We also sent an electronic version to counsel for Safe Asbury Waterfront. We've received several letters since our last meeting. We have a letter that we received on June 18 from Mr. Lieberman concerning parking. We do intend to address this letter. We do not believe that the statement of law contained in this letter is correct. We believe that the redevelopment plan explicitly does not require parking for commercial uses. But I will tell you that the witness we're calling this evening is not going to be the one addressing it. It will be Keenan Hughes, who is our professional planner, and he's going to be our fourth witness. I don't think we're going to reach him tonight, so if we don't, I don't want anyone to think that we don't plan on addressing the, the comments concerning parking. It's just that the witness that's called first this evening isn't going to address them. We also received a letter addressed to me and to the DEP from Mr. Lieberman, also dated June 18, concerning the CAFRA permit. I will tell you that we have, Asbury Partners has been in contact with the DEP concerning the validity and the ongoing nature of the CAFRA permit for many years now. And during that time, we have been in constant construction, which fully conforms to the regulations, and thus, the permit has not expired. The last time the DEP confirmed this for us was just in November of this past year. Out of an abundance of caution though, back on June 7, actually before receiving this letter, we did submit compliance plans to the DEP so that they can weigh in and confirm that the, the CAFRA permit is valid and ongoing, and that these plans in fact fully comply with the CAFRA permit.
Jack, would you like to mark these ones?
Yes, let's mark some of them.
Should we mark them? Sure.
Do you want those others? That in the record? Yes. Okay. Please. Yeah, I don't, do we have any series for objectors exhibits?
Yes, we're up to three. Three more, yes. I think three.
We're up to three, or, or next one will be four or three?
I think this one will be three.
Okay, so just make each one in date sequence, oh three, oh four, oh five, and so on.
Okay.
Thanks.
Oh two.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Jack.
First one's oh two.
Last one. Whatever it is.
So we will mark the letter that concerns parking, that was addressed to me. It dated June 18, 2019, as oh two. And the letter that was addressed to me and to Christopher Jones of the NJDEP, also dated June 18, we'll mark that oh three. Finally, just to confirm, we did give adequate public notice of this application prior to the last hearing, and we did carry it forward to this meeting. And also, looking around the room, I note that there are many extra seats that are still available, and as the chairperson confirmed, there's no one that's been held outside due to fire code issues. With that, I'd like to call up our first witness this evening, Sean Delaney, who is our civil engineer.
Oh, okay, okay. One other housekeeping item. Rick Lambert is here in attendance this evening. He has listened to either the tapes of CD and examined the exhibits, which is set forth in his certification, is that correct?
Yes.
For them from the last meeting. Signed the certification. I'd like that entered into as whatever B, number we're up to. And I've supplied a copy of that to both Mr. Lieberman and Ms. Smith.
Okay, we're repeat, direct.
Okay, that's fine. So he is eligible to participate in the vote.
Thank you. I think we just need to have Mr. Delaney.
You swear upon the testimony, give your testimony to the truth, of all truth and other truth?
I do.
State, can you for the record?
Sean, S.E.A.N., Delaney, D.E.L.A.N.Y. I'm a principal with Bowman Consulting, located 303 West Main Street in Freehold, New Jersey. I'm a licensed civil engineer, a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 2003, with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT, graduated in 1999. Have over 20 years of experience in civil engineering, site development. I've satisfied before several planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
We would like to offer, Mr. Delaney is an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you. Sir, my name is Stuart Lieberman, and I represent the objectors. I'm just curious, what's the list time you submitted a stormwater badge to this, and you wrote any board or zoning board?
It's been within the last 30 days.
Okay. Do you do that as a regular routine part of your work for your clients?
If it is required, yes.
Okay. And you seal the drawings as part of your practice?
If it's under my guidance, if I'm overseeing the project or designing it, yes.
Very good. I have no questions, no further questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Delaney, to begin, can you reorient the board to the location of the property and discuss the bulk standards that apply to the proposed development?
And it also just, which, which, when we're looking at these, could we just verify which dates we're looking at?
I think what I'm going to do, just to make the record clear, is I'll remark all of them.
Okay.
So that, that way we're not confused about revision dates.
That's fine.
And I do have, as we did last time, an exact paper copy that we have printed out. So we'll begin by marking this first exhibit on the screen as A17, picked up from last time. Mr. Delaney, if you could, as you begin, tell us what A17 is.
A17 is a copy of the boundary and topographic survey for the subject property that was submitted as part of the original application. It is dated 3/29/18, prepared by my office.
Okay. Mr. Delaney, then, can you discuss the location of the property and the bulk standards that apply to it?
Certainly. Looking at the survey, the property is identified as Block 4502, Lot 1.23 is the left half of the image on site. It's located along Ocean Avenue as the western boundary. The boardwalk is the eastern boundary, and then the extensions of Sixth Ave is located to the south, and Seventh Ave to the north of the property. The site is a little over 25,000 square feet, 25,396 to be exact, with a lot frontage of 248 feet along Ocean Avenue. It is vacant right now, being undeveloped, and there are three easements that are present along the property boundaries. Along the Ocean Ave frontage, there's a 20-foot wide pedestrian and utility easement, and then there are two 15-foot wide utility and access easements, one each on the north and south sides of the property. Yep. So, looking at the next exhibit.
Which one mark is A18?
This is, this exhibit is titled Exhibit Existing Conditions, dated today, 6/24/19, prepared by my office. This is, using the, the survey as a background, just colors and identifies some of the lot constraints on the property. The blue line around the perimeter, that is the site property line, the boundary for Lot 1.23. The yellow area across Ocean Avenue, that is the 20-foot wide easement in that, along that location. The two hatched areas, striped areas on the north and south sides are the 15-foot wide pedestrian and utility easements in those locations. And the green area is the remainder of the lot which is available for development on the property. Essentially, the easements to the north, south, and west are acting as the, the setback lines to any building and construction on the property, and the boardwalk on the east side is acting as that, that look, that setback at that point.
And Mr. Delaney, does the lot size conform to the requirements of the waterfront redevelopment area?
Yes, it does.
And does the lot frontage conform to the requirements in the waterfront redevelopment plan area?
Yes, it is. Just for clarification, 15,000 square foot minimum is required where it's over 25,000 square feet, and 100-foot lot width is required where we're a little over 248.
Are there any other bulk standards within the waterfront redevelopment plan?
There are not. Let's actually go back to beginning, A17. Yep. One other thing to talk about too is elevations and slopes on the grade, as well as existing utilities. The site right now, on the eastern edge along the boardwalk, is up at elevation a little over 14, slopes down to the existing sidewalk on the west side at about elevation 11. And then, all utilities for the site are located either in Ocean Avenue or within that 20-foot easement along the, the Ocean Ave frontage.
All right. If we're going to move on to this next exhibit, I'll mark it as A19. Can you tell us what it is?
A19 is a copy of the layout and dimensioning plan. That was part of the revised submission, dated 6/13/2019, prepared by my office. It's Sheet 5 of 14 of the site plan set. So, as I mentioned, going back to the setbacks again, so, so the setbacks to the north and south, the easements are 15 feet wide. Therefore, the, the minimum setback to the, any building or construction on the site would be 15 feet. We are proposing a 15-foot to the, the furthest point of construction to the north and south. The building, as Mr. Handel pointed out during his testimony, steps back a little bit on the, near the western edge of the property, and they are, that's located at about 16.7, 16.8 feet to the, to the property line, so a little extra buffer off of those property lines. In addition, along the western 20-foot easement, we have had to hold the minimum of 20 feet, we are providing 20 and a half feet along that location. And then, there is no setback on the boardwalk, and we're providing is basically all improvements up to the edge of the boardwalk as proposed.
And to clarify, is it the easements that are requiring the setback, or the waterfront redevelopment plan?
It is the easements that are, that are dictating the setbacks of this, of the building and the development.
Could the applicant, under the waterfront redevelopment plan, absent the easements, build up to the property line?
Yes. So, there's a question last time as well regarding the setbacks and the relationship of this to the other uses up and down the boardwalk. The 20-foot easement that runs along Ocean Avenue runs along the entire length of Ocean Avenue, all the way down to the south. Therefore, every building along Ocean Avenue that fronts the boardwalk, or between the boardwalk and Ocean Avenue, has to meet that 20-foot setback along that, that side. In addition, all those buildings are also located up on the boardwalk for direct access from those facilities, retail establishments, restaurants, and the like, up there, for direct access to and from the boardwalk for patrons. So there's a zero setback on that side. We are consistent with what all the other pavilions are doing up and down Ocean Avenue. In addition, the other pavilions also have access from Ocean Avenue within the 20-foot easement, consisting of stairways, ramps, also utilities located in that, in those areas. We as well are also proposing similar improvements within the easement for access to the building, as is dictated by the elevation of the boardwalk for access on that side.
And when you talk about the front access area and the 20-foot setback there, am I correct that over the last few days, that the applicant actually has revised the layout of the sidewalk structure within that area?
That is correct. Mr. Handel testified previously that we had an access stairway, looking at Exhibit A19, on the southern end of the building, providing stairs up to a landing area for access into the main front door. There was also a sloped walkway that led from that landing area to the north, down to the existing sidewalk, about a little more than midpoint of the building, heading north. The previous plan showed a separation between the bike area, the bike parking on, with, on our site, and the walkway, the slope walkway access to the building. Based on comments and some, and a meeting with the, the board's planner, we have revised the layout there to combine or better connect the bike rack area and that entrance, so people don't have to exit out onto the sidewalk to get into the landing area, to the entrance to that, the slope sidewalk up to our, to the main entrance of the building. Once again, the purpose of, of bringing the, the walkway down to that location, provide a DA-accessible route to the front entrance of the building, and the location of the existing parking stalls that are located on front of our property are located at the northern end of our site. So we felt it best to bring that sidewalk as close to that, that location for those, those folks parking there to be able to get out of their cars and, and get up as quickly into this slope walkway to get into the facility.
And the two easements located on either side of the building, what is the purpose of those easements?
The purpose of that is for public access from Ocean Avenue up to the boardwalk and to the beach. And as a requirement, I believe in the waterfront redevelopment plan, those access points are, are to be maintained uninterrupted, cannot be built upon for the public use. So it cannot be developed for private use, gated, closed off, or improved with buildings or other improvements. The existing, sorry, the southern pedestrian access point is an existing 15-foot wide concrete walkway at the end of the pedestrian crossing from Sixth Avenue up to the boardwalk. We are proposing to, that is proposing, propose to remain in its current condition, or in its current state, and maintain as an access point. The north side is a new access, access way, 15 feet in width also, to be provided from the existing sidewalk up to the proposed boardwalk upon, upon completion for access along the Seventh Ave continuation. So both sides will have public access that will be uninterrupted, and it will not be, this, this development will not hinder that access in any, in any way.
And how about the people who are inside the beach club? How would they access the beach?
As Mr. Handel pointed out, there are three access points into the building, into and out of the building, the main entrance on Ocean Avenue, and then there are two doors that lead out to the public access walkways on the north and south sides of the building. So anyone inside the facility would exit out one of those three doors, either out to the sidewalk on Ocean Avenue, or to one of the 15-foot wide pedestrian accessways, and then turn head up to the boardwalk. There is no direct access from our facility, from this facility, to the proposed boardwalk.
How would emergency vehicles access the property?
They would access, emergency personnel would access it similar way as any patron of the facility that entry one of the three doors locating it. Vehicles would pull up, utilize the existing striped area at the end of Sixth Avenue. They could probably pull up onto the pedestrian walkway areas as well if need be. I'm assume, assumptions that if, for any emergencies that would happen on the beach and the boardwalk, the ambulances, police cars would utilize those walkways to be able to get up as close to the boardwalk as possible, into the beach to get people on and off. Similar situation could happen for anybody that needed assistance for this facility. We have designed the, the northern access point as a reinforced concrete walk that would be able to support, you know, an occasional vehicle as needed, six inches thick with some reinforcing in there. So we have, we've prepared for use for emergency vehicles if needed.
Can you please discuss the impervious coverage on the site?
Certainly. One of the comments from the, from the board engineer related to the level of development intensity on the site, and it ties back to the waterfront redevelopment plan on page 90, which then references also the CAFRA regulations and the CAFRA permit that was approved for the overall waterfront development. In that area, it classifies this, the waterfront redevelopment area as a special urban area and subject to high-intensity development. It's quoted right out of the, it's taken word for word out of the waterfront redevelopment plan. In the requirements for that is that a maximum impervious coverage of 90% is permitted, a maximum herb and shrub cover of 5%, minimum, sorry, is permitted, and a minimum tree planting requirement of 5% is also required or permitted. In this case, the, these three criteria were based upon the overall waterfront redevelopment area, not each individual site-specific development. As a whole, the entire waterfront has to comply with these 90, 90%, 5%, and 5% requirements. And in this case, some, some properties maybe have a little more impervious surfaces, maybe up to 95, but you have parks and open space areas scattered throughout the development, which add substantial non-impervious tree planting and shrub planting areas to help comply with these regulations as a whole. For this site, we, we did calculate the, the values, just for comparison purposes. The site, we, the application that we submitted, we calculated the impervious coverage on the property as 76%. And that consisted of the, the proposed building, the public access walks on the north and south side of the property, as well as we included the pool deck area. And we did that to be conservative. The pool deck area, based on the plans that were submitted, is going to have openings in it, which will allow any runoff that does land on it to infiltrate, or travel through the deck into the underlying soils, essentially recharge. It acts almost as a, a non-impervious surface by, by allowing the water to get into the soils beneath. If we remove the pool deck from our calculations, the, the site impervious coverage of buildings, concrete walks, and the like is only 29% on the site. The herb and shrub cover, Mr. Bauer will talk more about where, where the plantings are located, is approximately 10% of the site, and you'll see it during his testimony. The proposed tree planting areas, right now we have 0% on site. Like I said, we're not required to provide all 5% on our property because it's a overall development requirement, not a site-specific, each lot-specific requirement on the property. So that, the fact that we have 0% here does not mean that the rest of this, the rest of the development is not compliant with this, this regulation. In fact, is in compliance based on the approval that CAFRA had granted originally.
So before we get into stormwater a little further, perhaps you can discuss the grading at the site.
Going to the, the next slide.
Okay, so this is the one that was page six of your submission, and I guess we will mark A20.
Okay. Yes, this is the, the grading and utility plan that was revised on 6/13/2019, Sheet 6 of 14 in the revised plans that were submitted. Excuse me. As I mentioned before, the grades, existing grades on site are a little up of 14, up at the boardwalk, 14, 14 and a half, and slope down to approximately elevation 11 at the existing sidewalk on Ocean Avenue. We are proposing to maintain those grades on north and south sides. The northern, sorry, the eastern end of our site is brought up to elevation 14.5 to be equal with the boardwalk elevations in that location. And on the eastern, sorry, the western edge, the at-grade features where the bike rack is, the start of the sloped walkway, and the bottom of the stairs for the main entrance are all down at grade level. We are sloping up the grade and soil from those sidewalks up to the building facade for landscaping to accommodate the stairs and the slope, slope ramp up there, so it looks like a, sorry, a, a smooth transition. That's where you're not seeing any, anything underneath the building or any other extensions of the walls down further. The grade will stop at the face of the building, essentially, on the western side of the property. And the reason for, for, for that primarily is, is due to the FEMA flood elevations on the property. The effective map, that's the, the effective FEMA flood zone on the property is elevation 10, we're in a V10 zone. Normally, that would mean that the, any improvements to there for in a V-zone would have to have the lowest horizontal member. the lowest horizontal member, one foot, the bottom of that member, one foot above the flood zone. So the bottom of our horizontal will be at, will be at 11, and then the rest of our building would continue upward. However, the FEMA also, several years ago, issued preliminary maps after Sandy that revised the flood elevations. Those maps changed these, the flood zone on site from a VE10 zone to a VE12 zone, essentially raising the flood elevation two feet on on the property. Therefore, in our design, the DP requires it to use the more restrictive elevation for these designs and to make sure you're compliant with FEMA flood hazard building codes and flood hazard area regulations of the NJDEP. So we have designed the site to meet the 12, elevation 12 requirement. Our lowest horizontal member, I believe Mr. Handel also testified to this, will be at elevation 13. From there, it'll extend up to a finished floor of the of the club and the facility inside the buildings, and the deck areas will be at elevation 14.5, essentially two and a half feet above that flood elevation.
Can you describe how the utilities will service the site?
Certainly. As I mentioned, the utilities are all located either within Ocean Avenue or along the, within the 20-foot easement in front of the property. Sanitary is proposed to connect to a existing lateral that's low, that's present on the northern end within that easement, extending lateral up to the southern end of our property and into the into the site. Water is existing within Ocean Ave. We will connect into that with a, a single water main coming across the street into a vault that will be located below grade for two, for a fire and a domestic service that will be fed into the inside of the facility. Electric services are also located within the easement. We are proposing a transformer at the northwest corner of the site within the easement that will then feed into internal rooms inside for metering. Gas also located within Ocean Avenue, trying to maintain that trench is close to the water main so we don't have too many individual trenches along Ocean Avenue. And as Mr. Handel pointed out previously, the gas meter will be located on the southern building facade in that little niche between the building and the walkway. We carved it out, it'll be recessed back there, and Mr. Bauer will talk more about some screening for that. I think Mr. Handel pointed that out as well with the living wall that's going to be located in that locate, in in that area. Storm sewer, we are proposing two roof drains on northern and southern portions of the building. Those roof drains will dis, will collect the covered portions of the building, discharge them into a 24-inch perforated pipe and stone trench that runs parallel to the building north and south. Purpose of that is to capture some of these smaller storms and infiltrate it into the into the underlying soils. It was a recommendation by the TRC committee when we first presented this application to see if we could do something to try and put some more water into the into the underlying soils instead of having it all run off into the existing storm sewers in Ocean Avenue. The roof drains are six inches and eight inches, six inches on the north end, eight inches on the south end. And I'll talk more about the the actual storm system in a few minutes. And in addition, we also will be providing a irrigation system on site in the landscaped areas that the landscaped irrigation system will also be equipped with a rain sensor. So it will limit and hopefully avoid turning on any any rain events or where this, the moisture in the soil is high enough that it would be, would not need any watering to occur.
You mentioned stormwater. Can you discuss which regulations you reviewed in connection with designing this stormwater management system for this project?
Certainly. The overall development created a, a master plan essentially stormwater system throughout the waterfront redevelopment area. Series of inlets, storm conveyance pipes, water quality structures throughout the road network, both north and south and east and west. That application was 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 obviously previously approved as part of the original overall approval for the for the waterfront redevelopment area. And as each product has come in to develop on each one of the individual sites, they're tying into the existing system and confirming that the systems, what they're proposing is sufficient and can be handled by the works with what was originally approved. Under these regulations, under the current regulations, there are some criteria that are that are classified based upon the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations located NJAC 7 colon 8. And these are, these would apply if the if a product is is defined as a major development. Major development is any product that increases impervious surface on site a quarter of an acre or disturbs more than one acre of land. As I mentioned before, in our conservative nature, we are talking about an impervious coverage of about 76% on site, which equated to about 0.44 acres, which would exceed that 0.25 or quarter acre limit. If we did not account for the pool deck, we could, the impervious coverage would be down at 29%. We'd be under that quarter acre and therefore the stormwater rules technically wouldn't apply as an individual basis on this site. We still analyze the site using the stormwater regulations, we believe, because it's tied into the overall development, it felt is it's the correct thing to do. With a major development, three criteria are required to be addressed: stormwater quantity, groundwater recharge, and stormwater quality for each development. In terms of the quantity, the regulations state that if the area discharges to a tidal water body, then compliance with the quantity reductions is not required. Being the ultimate discharge for for this area of the waterfront is the Atlantic Ocean, which is a tidal water body, therefore quantity reductions are not required for this product or for the waterfront development area. In addition, groundwater recharge, if you're in a planning area one, the recharging groundwater is not a requirement. So once again, we are not required to, based on this development, we are not required to recharge groundwater. However, based on the design, we are recharging some groundwater as a recommendation from the TRC committee. Water quality would be required based upon a quarter acre of more new impervious surfaces being proposed on the property. The interesting part here is the, when you're treating water quality, you're trying to treat the sediments, oils, from running off into the into into existing storm sewer systems, from getting into lake streams and and water bodies. Usually, those are related to vehicular use areas, roads, parking lots, et cetera. Building roofs, pedestrian walkways where where vehicular use is not allowed or not performed are usually considered clean runoff areas and therefore are not really, are not required to be treated by the regulations. It should be noted that the overall redevelopment plan, as part of the storm sewer system design, has several water quality structures that have been constructed throughout the road network, which handles the road runoff from the individual properties as well as the roadway, road network in the waterfront area. So any water that would drain off our site, for instance, the concrete areas, the walkways on the north and south, they're not captured by anything on our site or recharge. They flow from the boardwalk down to the street, are captured by two, the two inlets in the street, and that are conveyed through the existing city system of pipes, road network, to water quality structures that are located in the, in the, in the, the street network for treatment prior for discharging off-site. That was all taken part of, as part of the original CAFRA permit and waterfront development plans that were prepared. Therefore, based on my, my review and my understanding of the regulations, the, my opinion that because there's roof runoff is clean, the, there is no essentially dirty water coming from the site, and any areas that would be conveyed from the walkways that could potentially be, that are treated by the the existing systems in the road network, water quality standards have been met for this specific, this development as it relates to the entire waterfront project. Getting into the the system, the design of the storm sewer system that as we propose it, it's a very simple system. The roof drains would discharge into a single 24-inch perforated pipe. That pipe would be surrounded by stone. So the water that would come into it, that pipe is at elevation six with the bottom invert, two foot high. Water would fill up in the pipe, infiltrates, the smaller storms would infiltrate up to the the two-year storm. Water quality and two-year storms would infiltrate into the underlying soils, and then any larger storms to tan up through the 100 or even further if they, if it ever happens, would then discharge through two overflow pipes that are at each end and connect to the existing inlets that are located on the north and south sides of the property along Ocean Avenue. So we are not proposing to handle all of the drainage or all recharge the entire roof runoff. And it is that, it's just the runoff from the the roof of the building. I believe Mr. Handel, that is around 6,000 square feet for that area, and that would be put into this underground system, infiltrated into the ground for the smaller storms, and then larger storms discharged into the existing system for ultimate discharge off-site.
And as part of designing the stormwater system, were there any test borings done to determine the type of soils?
There were some preliminary test, test soil borings that were performed on the property, three in particular that went along the frontage of the property along Ocean Avenue that we did examine as part of the design. They, they, one thing when we're doing, when you're doing at an infiltration system, you're looking at depth of seasonal high water, depth of water tables to make sure that there's sufficient room for the water to infiltrate into the groundwater, the soils below and not back up, and then cause backups further into the facility or elsewhere on, in the surrounding area. The results of those borings that we that we looked at, they were born, they were not test pits. When they opened them up and analyzed it based upon criteria that these geotechnical engineer looked at, they estimated that the water table at that time was approximately 10 feet below grade, which puts it down elevation, elevation one up to elevation four through the property. So based on that and putting our, our system, the bottom of our system at six with our pipe, five and a half with a stone bedding underneath it, we felt there was, the, our pipe being on the the western end of the site where the elevation, water elevation would be around elevation one or two, there is sufficient separation between the season, the water table and the bottom of our infiltration system that meets the requirements of the stormwater manager rule.
Two quick questions, quick. I don't have to swear, right?
No.
Is the 10 feet below grade, is that the seasonal high or was that observed at the time?
It was done in a, a test pit, so a split fluid sample, and they analyzed it based on water content, so it was not a seasonal high.
Okay. And when was that done? What month?
It was performed back in April of 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can we just confirm while we're at it, all the elevations are in NAVD 88?
Correct.
Okay.
So moving on from stormwater then, we had received questions about lighting. So I'm going to move to the next exhibit, which we'll mark as A21. So Mr. Delaney, can you describe generally how you propose to light the site and just discuss some of the high points and low points of the lighting?
Certainly. So exhibit A21 first is the lighting plan for the ground floor, sheet seven of 14, revised 613, 2019 as part of the resubmitted package. There will be some more exhibits, there's some things like, get a little, hopefully I'll try to keep it simple and not as confusing, not confuse anybody. This sheet seven 14, what this exhibit also has added besides that plan is some color to it, to for clarity on some of the light fixtures that are being proposed. This exhibit is specifically deals with the pedestrian lights that are on the exterior of the building, surrounding the pedestrian walkways on Ocean Avenue and the two 15-foot wide walkways from Ocean Avenue to the boardwalk. So, so the lighting analysis that was done took into account the four existing fixtures that are located along Ocean Avenue. They're shown as the kind of purplish dots at the top of the screen. Those lights are approximately 12 feet in height. They're LED fixtures, they're about 38 watts each with a natural white color. You understand 4,000 Kelvin, you'll understand this more as I get into more of what we're proposing. In addition, there are two pole-mounted lights along the walkways on the western side that are also in purple on the north and south sides. They are the existing, existing lights and also light, I guess, to be installed as part of the boardwalk project. They're, the fixtures are 18 feet high to the light source, 20-foot high poles at the top of the the structure. They are the classic, I guess the classical type of ornamental fixture, similar to what's on the boardwalk in some places, I believe. Those lights are are also LEDs, 340 watts to illuminate those locations. They are also a natural white colored 4,000 Kelvin.
So the purple dots, just for my own clarification, those are what I would typically call, a common non-engineer would call, streetlights.
Streetlights, correct. Correct. And those are existing, so we we included them in our analysis. I guess there was some comments from your board professionals to make sure that we included that in our light levels to to make sure that we didn't need to either add more lights or or determine what what lighting was needed along those areas to provide sufficient illumination levels. The green areas on the north and south site, those are wall-mounted, those are wall-mounted fixtures that we are proposing to add additional lighting along the walkway. There was, the original existing conditions, I believe, had a fixture on our, on a, another pole-mounted light fixture on the site that is obviously due to the limits of our development were removed, so we supplementing with some wall-mounted lights along the the perimeter of the of the facility, of the, of the development to illuminate the walkway specifically. Those lights are 10-watt LED lights mounted at seven-foot heights, and the color of those, the streetlights are at 4,000 Kelvin, a normal white, these are a warm white color, about 2,700 Kelvin. So they are soft, more of a yellowish, softer glow, not as that bright LED fixture that you see sometimes in a parking lot for a retail facility to really light it up and do, we're trying to put ambient lighting on the outside, not make it a shopping center lighted facility around the perimeter. In addition, the lights in red that are along the the west facade and the south facade, those are wall grazing, grazing lights. They are also LED fixtures, about five watts per linear foot. They are angled up towards the building to illuminate the facade and the, and the green screen essentially that's being, that's proposed. They are, they will have a shield on them, they are angled at about a nine-degree, nine-degree tilt to allow all the light from that to hit the building and not go off into the sky or reflect or or anybody, affect anybody walking on the sidewalk adjacent to it. They are a very warm white color, 2,200 Kelvin, so even even softer glow than the lights around the perimeter. The lights in blue are little tape lights, ribbon lights. Some people, it's popular now at Christmas time to have those rope lights. It's essentially the same type of a of a system. They are located underneath the stairs and adjacent to the sloped walkway leading to the entrance. They are 2.9 watts per linear foot, an LED, also a very warm white at 2,200 Kelvin, so very low, just accent lighting along those those areas. And then there's one other fixture that's located over the main door, it's hard to see on there. Right over the main steps, there's a, a sconce light that is located over the, over that main entrance, is a single 27-watt LED fixture mounted about eight and a half, eight and a half feet above the, of the landing area. Once again, about 2,700 Kelvin of warm white color in that area, just to illuminate the front entrance. With regards to the lighting levels and what what this all means, we did, the analysis was run to determine, using those lights, of what the the lighting levels would be along the walkways. So along Ocean Avenue, we have a max of 3.7 foot candles, a minimum, obviously due to some areas made up by the building or out into the street, it's zero, with an average of about one foot candle across the frontage of the property. Along the north walkway, we have a max of six-foot candles, minimum just a little above zero with an average of just under two foot candles. And similarly, on the south side, a max 7.9, about a half-foot candle minimum, with an average of about 2.7 foot candles. So the lighting levels provided are sufficient for providing the illumination necessary for pedestrian safety along Ocean Avenue and the two walkways. pedestrian safety along Ocean Avenue and the two walkways from the Ocean Avenue up to the boardwalk.
Can I ask just one quick question? This is a question, so I swear. Did you analyze uniformity on these pedestrian?
We did analyze some average min ratios and max min ratios for each of these areas. For the Ocean Ave, because of the minimum being zero, kind of didn't like, couldn't get a number for that location. On the north side, we have an average min ratio of 18.7 and a max min ratio of 60. That's based on the maximum of six and a low point of .1. Once again, as it goes off of the site, it gets lower. And then on the south side, you have an average min of 4.55 and a max min of 13.1. Next one.
So we'll mark this next exhibit as A22. Can you explain what we're looking at here, Mr. Delaney?
Sure. And the next one, A23, that we're going to mark as well, which is the next slide. These are the details of all the lighting fixtures that were included on the lighting plan. There's a back on the bottom of Exhibit A21, the lighting schedule for the ground floor has all of these fixtures that I'm talking about, both internal and external listed through there. What I've done here is, as I mentioned on the Exhibit A21, these fixtures identify which of the styles of fixtures are located based on the color coordination between the two, between the plan view and the details. So lower right-hand corner, the green box, the box around, the fixture surrounded by green, those are the wall-mounted lights on the north and south side of the walkway. The purple lights up top and then the box up in the upper left-hand corner of the plan are the existing light fixtures. The one on the left is the Ocean Ave fixture and the one on the right is the fixture for the walkways. The red box is the grazing lights along the front and south side of the building, west side. The tape light along the stairs on the sloped walkway is surrounded in the blue, in the And then going to the next one, which would be A23, go back, sorry. That one. A23, which is the light fixture details, ground floor, Sheet 9 of 14 of the set. The lower right-hand corner is a fixture that is located above the main entrance to the facility, the single sconce light.
There was one that you'd mentioned that was shielded, was that the HT that is on the two walkways on either side or?
The one, the one is the, if you go back to Exhibit A22, I don't know if we can zoom in on the red box up top. The, the red one, red one through the center, those are the grazing lights up the wall.
So those are the ones that are shielded?
Yeah, there's a picture, an image on the right-hand side which shows the angle, there's a screen on the detail, the mounting mechanism for it, show that it does direct up towards the building and not into the night sky.
Okay.
The one over, the one over the main door also has a extended shield onto it, so it's angled down towards the ground and extended shield off the top of it to further prevent any light from spilling out into the roadway or into the walkway, so it illuminates the landing area only.
Okay. Thank you.
Well.
Should we go to the next exhibit that I'll mark, A24?
Sure. A24 is the, once again, same sheet, Sheet 7 of 14, the lighting plan for the ground floor. The colors on this one are now directed towards the interior of the facility only. So the, I guess one of the big things that came up at the last hearing were the poles on the eastern side along the boardwalk that are illuminated in blue, or colored in blue. Those are the free, four freestanding pole lights they were proposing to illuminate the pool deck area essentially that's required. There's a, the pool code requires a certain lighting intensity or level at the, an average level over the pool deck, at the edge of the pool, of 10-foot candles. So through many iterations of trying to figure out what the best way to light this without having 400 light fixtures, smaller light fixtures throughout the development, a combination of some of these pole-mounted lights as well as some wall-mounted lights to illuminate the deck area were proposed to be, we felt was the best option to illuminate the area. Those poles, it was five poles previously on the previous plans. Over in the northwest corner by the exit door, there's a little hatch or clouded area there, there was a fifth pole that was located in that corner, based upon the testimony provided Mr. Handel last time, where the pool shrunk by a couple feet, which increased the deck space by a little, a couple feet. They had to rework some of the lighting photometrics to account for that. So some of the light switched on the interior, the western side of the interior. They moved some things on the outside and were able to eliminate that one pole on that north side. The reigning poles are, each pole will have four to five small little light fixtures attached to them. Each of those lights, there's 36 watts LED. So each fixture will have, if there's five fixtures on it, will have 180 watts total coming off that pole. If it's the four, there's one single pole with four lights, they'll have 144 watts coming off of that. The pole heights are 20 feet high. The light fixtures are not 20 feet high. Light fixtures staggered. Two of the lights will be at 19 feet, two of the lights will be down at 17 and a half feet, and the one pole with the fifth light will have that fifth light down at 16 feet in height. The dash lines that come off each of those, off the fixtures are the angles, directional angles horizontally, that each one of those lights will be directed into the property. So you can see that we are directing all of that light directly into the site and not along the property boundary of the boardwalk. The intent is to light our facility and not spill over and become a nuisance to the surrounding properties in the boardwalk. All of these lights will be the warm white color at 2,700 Kelvin. Once again, a nice soft glow, not the bright bluish type light that would attribute to a lot of LED fixtures. The angle, as mentioned on the plan, those show the horizontal angles of the fixture alignments. The vertical angles, they will be angled down towards the deck. I realized when I wrote the chart, I put in here as a 60-degree angle. The 60-degree angle I calculated from the vertical coming up, 60 degrees. Took the pole height times the direction of the thing to find the, to calculate the angle, what was done. So from the horizontal, it will be 30 degrees down from that location into our property. So I want to make sure that's clear and I will make sure that's clarified on the plans moving forward.
I have a question about the lights on those poles.
Yes.
Are you able to adjust the angles or do they come preset at an angle when you mount them on the pole?
When they will be mounted, they will be set at the appropriate angles and they are not proposed to be moved again after that. They will not be fixed in those positions. They do have the ability to move, but it's not the intent to, once they're set in their right locations, to keep them in that same location.
Is the light source shielded for each of the LEDs?
I believe that there is a, the housing does extend a little bit beyond that, at least on the top, on the top part, so it does not expand out, and it is directed down towards the deck. So you will not see it from above across the street. If you're looking down, the fixture will be, wait a minute, you should, we should not be able to see the light fixture from elevated areas across the street and you won't see it from walking on the boardwalk because they will be directed away from, directed towards the interior of the facility and not along the boardwalk path. The other lights inside the, inside the middle of the facility, there are two groups of three wall-mounted lights located on the western bulkhead of the roof deck. The area in red, there are two circles in magenta on either end, one on the north side and one on the south side. Those are low wattage LED lights. They are two groups of three, as I mentioned, mounted about 12 feet high at a 45-degree angle with the same shielding coming down into the pool deck. They are there to illuminate the two ends, the northern end, northern and southern ends of the deck itself. They are 27-watt LED fixtures, once again, that warm white color, 2,700 Kelvin. The red areas along the western bulkhead and then along the eastern edge of the kitchen out to that access door to the southern walkway, those are wall-mounted lights. They're mounted about 10 and a half feet high, 10-watt LED fixtures. Once again, they're somewhat in a box, directed downward to illuminate just that area directly in front of the cabanas and the walkway in that location. Once again, the warm white color at 2,700 Kelvin. There is a green, the green dot that's located just past the entrance into the site where the access to the bathrooms and the locker rooms are, has a single wall sconce, eight-and-a-half watt LED fixture, seven feet mounting height. Once again, most of these fixtures are all this warm white color, 2,700 Kelvin. And then the yellow area that's behind the food and beverage spot on the southern, on the northern face of the southern leg of the building, those are, once again, facade grazing lights. There is a green screen that goes up that portion of the wall as well. They are seven-watt LED fixtures. They're ground-mounted, angled up to illuminate that wall only. They illuminate, they will hit the wall, they will not go into the night sky to do that as well. They are, once again, the warm white color facility. And then there are some additional lights at the ground level that are more accenting lights proposed. Inside the pool, you have two types of lights. You have 14-watt LED fixtures on the northern half of the pool on that little sun shelf before the stairs. They are recessed into the side of the pool. And then you also have 24-watt LED fixtures in the deeper sections of the pool, same thing, recessed in for those areas. At the food and beverage area, on the southern end of the site, southern end of the pool, there are ceiling-mounted lights. They are seven-watt LED fixtures that are directed downward directly over the service area itself. They are mounted nine feet high. There is a roof over that facility because the building, the deck above it covers it. So they are just there to illuminate the workspace behind the, behind that facility. They're not there to illuminate the deck or the surrounding for any kind of patrons or pedestrian movements. There are under-counter lights that are, once again, those low LED tape lights that are along the stairs and the walkway out front to illuminate underneath the counters. And then they also have some string lights that are above on top of the canopy. Those are similar to, you know, your small Christmas lights. That'll be up there, eight-and-a-half LED lights, about 10 feet high in that location. Let's get me around the statistics for the interior as well. We have a maximum foot candle of 20, foot candles, a minimum of .1 with an average of 10.7, remembering that the pool deck itself at the edge has to have a minimum of 10-foot candles per code. The whole point of the way it's illuminated is because of that requirement. That was a change from understanding, older code did not require these levels, is a recent change that has required these increased levels at this pool deck. In addition to the uniformity ratios, max, the average min ratio at 107 and the max min ratio at 209 based on that .1 low flow area. So if you got rid of the .1 and did some different things, those levels would go down, obviously, and be more uniform. And then once again, on the next exhibits, A24.
Actually, A25.
A25?
A25.
Oh, sorry. You're correct. A25, once again, is Sheet 8 of 14 with the light fixture details for the ground floor. And A26 will follow it, will be the same, same, the light fixture details for the ground floor, Sheet 9 of 14. Once again, color to show the lights proposed around the perimeter, around the interior of the facility. The ones in blue are the pole-mounted lights showing the light arrangement. Yellow are the grazing lights on A26 that are uploading the green wall on the southern facade. The red lights are the lights above the cabana and by the kitchen. The purple lights are the area lights mounted on top of the bulkhead, they're shining down to the pool deck. And then the green light is the one sconce essentially over the, or by the bathroom And then finally, the roof deck.
Mark this Exhibit A27.
This is the lighting plan for the roof deck, Sheet 10 of 14, submitted as part of the set. Once again, color added for clarity. The items, the lights in blue again are the pole-mounted lights. They each have two fixtures on them, similar type lights that were on the ground floor along the west, sorry, the eastern edge of the boardwalk. They're located underneath that shade structure that Mr. Handel testified to previously. Each fixture is 36 watts LEDs with a nine-foot mounting height, set to be under that 10-foot top of the shade structure in that warm white color. Again, the horizontal angles of the lights are shown on the plan in those dashed lines to cover, illuminate the area. The vertical angle is a 45-degree angle down towards the roof deck of those lights. And anti-glare visors, shields are proposed on those lights due to the, being elevated above and to make sure it did not impact any of the surrounding neighbors as well as anybody walking around the perimeter of the facility. In addition, the green lights are overhead string lights, 2.25 watts per linear foot. They're also LEDs. They are mounted overhead under the screen structure. They'll be mounted up about 10 feet between the poles, supporting the structure back and forth. I'll show you the detail of that in a second. They are a warm white, about 2,400 Kelvin. So they're even, even a little more soft than all the area lights that are being, that are proposed for the facility. And then the red areas around the deck itself are low wattage area lights. They are mounted along the roof deck walls, mounted a foot and a half above the wall. I believe Mr. Handel said the walls, I believe, about three and a half or four feet high. So they're located at the bottom, there to locate the deck itself for pedestrian walking along the roof deck. They come with a 45-degree louver essentially, directing the light downward, so you will not see the fixture across the way or even while you're walking next to it. They are 10.3 watts each, LED fixtures again, in that warm white color. The statistics up on the roof deck consist of a maximum of 22.1, a minimum of 1.6, an average of 10.3. And the uniform ratios, the average to min ratio at 6.45, the max to min at about 13.8.
Did you, did you separate the area under the canopy from the area along the walkway in the front, or did you add all the levels together when you did your study?
On the roof deck itself?
Yeah.
All the statistics are for the entire roof deck.
Would you, would you agree that it's going to be brighter under that canopy than it is along the front?
The maximum intensity levels are under the canopy due to those additional pole-mounted lights. So yes, if you ran the ratios differently, the areas around the perimeter would have a lower maximum than under that canopy. That, look at the plan with the point-by-point that is provided, you can see those, the levels within those walkways are still around 10 along those walking paths, but they're all just lights down to the deck of the material and not shooting up the lights, not anybody's eyes.
I really don't recall where the canopy is, but you're saying the canopy, which I know exists, I'm just not quite sure where it exists here and where the lights are.
The green lights that are there?
Yes.
Are essentially, you have the stairwell and the area in the, just behind in the bathrooms, I believe, to the west. The areas with the green light, the green lights that go back and forth are essentially the canopy and sun shade that come forward to the east off of that front.
So you still won't see those lights?
The lights will be?
The lights would be underneath the canopy?
Under the shade structure, blocked by, essentially by the canopy, by the canopy and the structure.
So no one from above could see those lights either?
Well, that's, yeah, they won't, they won't see, the lights won't see, the canopy will block, will screen them, even filter them even further. Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Delaney, what I'm pointing to here, this is the bulkhead that extends above the roof deck, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And the canopy is back behind the bulkhead, correct?
That's correct, it's to the east of the bulkhead.
And the lighting levels end at the walls of the roof because there is no spillage from the roof to any other point on the ground floor, right?
Based on the wall-mounted lights, they're down a foot and a half and they're directed downward.
Okay.
So there are no lights above the top of the parapet that could spill over. The lights, the pole-mounted lights are directed downward toward the deck in the angle, so the angles that are shown are where the light source would- So the angles that are shown are where the light source would hit the decking. So now, so it was run, assumed, and it took into account things that might spill over. And because of the parapet, it also blocks some of those lights at the ground level. When you got to those points, there would be nothing that'd spill over. We did include those on the ground floor on the interior levels. We did include any spill, any potential spillage levels off into the boardwalk area, and they are very minimal on that east side.
The upper levels, the lighting from the upper levels on the spillage?
For the?
The spillage just mentioned on the, at the ground level, that includes lights from the whole facility?
That does not, just for the ground floor. The ground floor is for all the ground floor lights spilling over onto the boardwalk.
Would there be spillage from the upper?
I don't expect any because of the way the angle, the lights are angled and the fact that the walls are up 3 and 1/2, 4 feet, that would capture a lot of that light before it would spill over onto the pedestrian access points.
Okay. Just to be complete, we'll mark, the next exhibit is 828.
Once again, these are the three fixtures, styles of fixtures proposed on the roof deck. The ones in blues are those pole-mounted under the shade structure, two fixtures on each of the poles. The one in red is the wall-mounted around the perimeter of the deck, a foot and 1/2 high. And then the green light or the string lights essentially above the, in the screen canopy area, just little decorative features to be turned on now. Those lights are there for decorative purposes only, they're not, they are not there to strictly to illuminate the area for safety. That's what the wall-mounted lights are for, as well as the pole-mounted lights. They just add a bit, piece of ambiance. They will add some light to those areas, but it's not substantial. And they are controlled, they can be turned on and turned off as needed. The other lights will be there more likely for pedestrian safety and emergency access points.
All right. So moving on beyond lighting, unless there's anything else I forgot to ask about the lighting?
Nope.
Okay. So moving beyond the lighting, the last area before we get into the professionals' reports that I wanted to address had to do with construction phasing, sorry, staging. Before I go there, are there any permanent improvements associated with the beach club that are planned to be constructed outside of Lot 1.23?
No.
All right. So we'll turn to the exhibit that, we'll go ahead and mark 829. And was this a sheet that you had submitted previously with your set?
Yes, this is a sheet 14, four of 14, entitled Construction Staging Plan. The set of site plans both submitted with the original set and the revised plans.
I'm going to ask you a few questions on this, and then I know we have some follow-ups to it, but the, just looking at this sheet alone, are the colored areas associated with permanent improvements, or are they areas where there was going to be proposed temporary construction activity?
In fact, all the items in color on this are all temporary improvements that are related to the construction of the facility. Upon completion of construction, all those areas that would be, are needed to assist in the construction, aid in it, would be removed and sent back to what the final plan shows for, as constructed.
So for example, today, if you're walking on the boardwalk past some of the other pavilions, there's fencing on the boardwalk near the building that just keeps pedestrians from accidentally going onto the construction site. Is that the type of fencing that could be on a small portion of the boardwalk during construction?
Correct. The blue line with the X around the perimeter of the site and onto the portion of Lot 24 shown is a construction fence to separate the construction going on in the site from the public, making it safe for them to continue to walk up and down the boardwalk, walk up and down Ocean Avenue, access the, access the boardwalk without coming into a dangerous situation with the construction activities going on on the property.
And what was the red area on this exhibit 829?
The red area is a, is defined as the construction and material staging area. So any of the materials that were needed for the site, potentially piles, building materials, utility structures or piping would be laid up, laid on those areas on the lay-down pad that would then be, when ready, would be installed on the site to make way for additional materials in that location.
And is it, you're understanding that the applicant, as a condition of approval, would be willing to do that type of construction staging from Lot 1.25 instead?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And Lot 1.25 is owned by the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And on here, can you sort of point out where 1.25 is located?
So the red area as shown doesn't go to the end of Lot 1.24, it goes about 3/4 of the way where the black rectangle is on the right-hand side. That is a little bit into Lot 1.25 and extends further to the north. So that red area would be shifting over to, back to, sorry, I guess. The red area will be shifting over to where that rectangle is for construction staging of the property.
Is that only if, I mean, what's, I'm sorry, I just didn't understand what that meant. Do you mean that, that you're going to stage at Lot 1.24 unless the city or?
No, you're going to stage at 1.25.
The staging is being changed from 1.24 to 1.25.
It's going to 1.25.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
So that red area will move.
Okay.
And that's for the construction?
That is for constructions, trailer and staging materials only. So the area now that is red will now, the fence line will actually pull back to, closer to that blue area, which was the access, and that will be left in its current state.
And are we seeking, is the applicant seeking to put any permanent improvements on 1.25?
No, it'll all be just, as said, temporary for the construction of the project.
All right. I would like to turn to a report that we received from Insight Engineering that is dated June 19th, 2019.
Any discussion?
Sure.
Maybe some discussion now. Michael Sullivan, Park Engineering's Board Engineer.
All right. And I'm referring to a report that was issued by Insight Engineering dated June 19th, 2019.
Let's mark that as well.
Would you like to?
Yeah, let's mark that, Michelle, as a board exhibit.
I actually don't have that much to add. So we'll mark B4. Mr. Delaney, have you reviewed the letter that's been marked as B4?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And I believe you've addressed most of the comments that are in this letter, but I want to go through just a few to highlight.
Sure.
First, on page 2, all right, where it's completeness review, there's a question about whether a signed and sealed survey was submitted. Did you provide a signed and sealed survey as part of the initial submission to the planning board?
Yes, we did. Originally, I thought in the first comment letter from Insight, there was an error in the reference on our general notes to the survey, and I believe that they thought they were referring to, they didn't receive that survey. That note has been updated to the survey for this property, was left, it was an errant message. Apparently, the board engineer still did not have a copy of the survey for that, so.
So just for the sake of the record and for completeness, we brought extra copies of it that we're going to, we'll hand over to the board secretary, just in case. And this is the boundary and topographic survey for Ocean Avenue.
Jeff, for the record too, this, the exhibit A17 that I was testifying to for was a copy of that, of the survey that was submitted that we are handing out.
No, it's A17, so I don't think we have to mark that one. It's just a large-sized copy of A17 that's been signed and sealed.
That's A17 large. It's just in a large copy. Okay, this goes back to you, that's your, this is mine. You're going to?
And this, again, was submitted as part of the initial package, correct?
Correct.
It was requested in number 7 to provide soil boring logs.
So, as I testified to, I did look at some preliminary logs that were prepared back in 2018, April of 2018. That information, Ms. Smith is, has copies, we'll provide.
So we'll mark this as, all right, we'll mark this as A30. And just for the record, can you describe what A30 is?
Sure. A30 is six pages of test boring logs, boring numbers B1 through B3 that were prepared by French and Perillo Associates dated 4/10/2018. They show the test borings that were done on the site, the three, these three that are located along the western edge of the property, from grade down to 42 feet for, 42 feet for boring is 1 and 2, and 52 feet for boring 3. And on this, they do indicate the depth of water at 10 feet on each of the boring logs, as I testified to.
All right. Moving to comment 33, there were a number of suggested revisions for the stormwater report. Do you agree that all those revisions can be made and updated in this stormwater report as a condition of approval?
Yes, we will provide all that information to the board engineer.
Okay. And everything would be consistent with how you testified today, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I've just gone through the rest. There were a number of other items where testimony was requested. I believe that we have hit all of them except for the one area concerning landscaping, which will be addressed by our landscape engineer. Otherwise, in the areas where testimony was not required, is it the applicant's position that they will require with all the remaining comments?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. That is everything I have for Mr. Delaney.
Okay. Does the, do our professionals have any questions?
I asked all my questions throughout.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
No? Does the board have any questions?
Question on the walkway in the front, the ADA ramp, is 3 and 1/2 feet wide enough for, for the ADA access?
The regulations specify, I'm not sure they specify a minimum, obviously has to be able to pass, to walk safely along the walkway. They do have a required, new regulations, recommendations are in there for having passing zones every 200 feet. The walkway is not 200 feet long, so you have a passing zone at the bottom and the top, which would comply with the regulations as well. It's also not a ramp, it's not a handicap accessible ramp, it's really just a slope sidewalk, no different than any concrete sidewalk or so on a slight incline of a hill. It's less than 5%, which does not meet the criteria of a ramp. If it was exceeded that, we would have other things to deal with, with railings and handrails and stuff like that, and a lot more width requirements would come into play on this. This is just, this is just essentially a sidewalk up to the facility.
Is there an opportunity to widen it if, if that was need, if that was desired?
I'm sure we could probably look into that and accommodate that.
Okay.
And just for clarity, you say it's not an ADA ramp, but it, the slope sidewalk does comply with all ADA requirements, is that a correct statement?
It provides, it provides accessible entrance to the, to the facility.
Thank you.
So you did, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
On the eastern side, the eastern facade, there's two little notches on the north and south. Where is that, that's distance from the east, the little notch?
Are you talking on the, for the building side?
Yeah, like where the easements are, see they have the little notches?
That little notch right there?
No, on the, on the eastern side, yeah. What's that setback from?
It's about, I want to say, it's about 6 feet.
6 feet?
Yeah. It should be on the survey, it's part of the property line. So on the south side, actually, it's 6.17, and on the north side, it's 6.25 feet.
I want to thank you for clarifying something from the testimony that was previously given, so, by Mr. Handel, which is, the deck is at 14.5 feet, but you did say that the lowest horizontal member is at 13.
Correct.
Feet.
Yes.
And that's, it's important because this is in a VE zone, and it's not just about elevating it above still water, it's about elevating it to the point where wave action can occur because it's in a high-velocity wave zone. I just want to ask about, you said that on the west side of the building, that there's a sloping upgrade and soil, so it's not to see anything underneath the building. And I'm wondering if that's in compliance with having no obstructions underneath the 13-foot lowest horizontal member?
The obstruction is, it would only be the soil or sand, there would be, there's no, any constructed portion of the building, if it extend down below there, would comply with regulations, have to break away. And I believe Mr. Handel testified that it would be. We were just bringing the rate up to make it look a seamless slope from the grade to the, to the building facade in that location. But anything below that 13 elevation would be a breakaway structure. So if any wave action or water came down through that area, did happen to hit any structure there, it would be a block away, and we push out any sand or soil that would be in that location.
Well, I do think that small amounts of fill are permissible, as long as it's not structural fill, but it would have to match whatever was in your soil borings, which was, so you said soil, it doesn't matter, but it would have to be sand similar to whatever you found in your soil borings, I believe.
I'm not 100% sure on what the material can be. I know, I know you can't raise grade to alleviate flooding problems in a site, to raise your site out of a floodplain, and we're not proposing to do that, it's just aesthetic purposes. It's not structural support soil, because the building is supported on piles.
Yeah, and you're totally permit, I mean, for stormwater purposes, grading, whatever, it totally makes sense that you would regrade the site. I just want to make sure that they're not obstruction, right? So the purpose of the V-zone, it's not that you raise it above, it's that actually you allow waves to go under it. So I just want to make sure that there, you're not proposing any obstructions that are below that 13-foot.
No permanent obstructions that would, that would prevent any waves from going through.
Okay. And no horizontal members, okay.
And the members, I think Mr. Handel also talked about, would be installed, I believe, perpendicular to the beach.
Right.
So they're not horizontally, you know, if it does get up higher, would hit those and hit into those members, they'd be perpendicular, which would allow them to flow between the areas as well. So you'd another, you'd actually get another foot of clearance underneath there and at the small end of the supporting members.
Good, good. And then, I mean, the other thing is just, and I brought this up last time, but any fencing, anything that you're proposing that is within a V-zone has to have openings in it. It's part of allowing flow to go through it. So I just want to make sure, even beyond like, you know, breakable, frangible, whatever material, it also should be, it should be something that allows flow to go through. And that's one of the requirements of NFIP and FEMA, and I just want to make sure that we're, we're meeting those, those requirements in the design, so it doesn't have to come back.
Yes, a lot of the design, obviously, as Ms. Smith pointed out, we did submit to CAFRA for our compliance statement to determine, for them to determine if the site, as we proposed it, is in full compliance with the CAFRA permit and the regulations. So if they have any comments, we'll obviously address those. In addition, the, the final design, obviously, the structural design, smarter things are still undergoing, will be ruled by the building department as we go, but we will, a condition of that is to confirm that all of the codes, FEMA codes, building codes are fully compliant, which is, you know, we've been tasked to do by the applicant.
Jack, if something is found to not be, and this is just a question about the procedural, so if something's found in the design to not be in compliance with FEMA V-zone regulations, is that something that then, due to redesign, it has to come back to the planning board, or does it?
Yeah, I think the topic you're talking about, the soil.
Yeah.
If that became an issue down the road, they would have to lower the fill, how much?
How much, you know, we'll find out. Let's just say the soil came below, just enough below that you could actually see under the building.
Right.
Then they'd have to come up with something to visually screen that gap. And if that, if the plans came to me, say, during the resolution compliance process, and I saw that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't feel comfortable approving that. So I would have them come back here and let you guys take their consent.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because I do think it's important that one of the comments in the inside engineering memo was that the board engineer also needs to see the results of the CAFRA review to make sure that they're comfortable with it being substantially in FEMA compliance. And I think that's, it's important that it goes to the board engineer and the board planner, if we can require that as part of the.
As a condition.
Okay.
As soon as we hear back from the DEP, we will copy the board on any correspondence from them.
Okay. And then I just had one more question on stormwater. So you said that anything above the two-year, it would go above the two-year storm, it would go to discharge on the north and south, which is the existing discharge. It then goes off-site. Where does the off-site discharge flow to?
One system on the south side heads down, sixth Ave. One heads down Seventh Ave, meets a block or two back there, and heads north. And eventually, it discharges, I believe, into Deal Lake, and then out to the ocean.
And just for, when you say heads down, you mean underground?
It's all underground, correct, yes. Through the existing storm sewer network. That was part, that was installed as part of the overall redevelopment plan approvals.
But is it possible that it could add to the overall discharge into Deal Lake, above a two-year storm?
Based upon the permitted, this is one of the comments, actually, Mr. Victor pointed out in his review memo to look at the pre and post numbers, which we're going to provide to him. The site, as I mentioned, the overall redevelopment area is allowed 90% impervious coverage, you know, which means if you took on a site, basically, you could actually say each site has 90% impervious, and then you have 10% grass, and it went everywhere. Some sites are 100, some sites are, you know, between 90 and 100. Some sites are essentially, you know, 5% to 10% impervious, because it's all walks with, some walkways with open areas, parks, and stuff like that. So the whole area's been designed to provide safe conveyance, not on an individual site level. But being that 90% is kind of a ballpark in there, as I mentioned, you know, we are 76 if we include the decking. If we don't include the decking, we're at 29% impervious coverage on the site. So we could go up to 90, so we're substantially below what could have been built on the site in terms of coverages.
Yeah.
For discharging off into that system. So based upon those numbers, I'm comfortable that the system that would have been designed, that would have been designed to handle a more intense, more impervious site development on this property, we're actually giving them, providing less water to those pipes, so it will not be a negative impact to the existing system.
Does the board have any other questions?
Couple of simple ones. When you were talking about the lighting for the pool, you said in the deeper end. I thought at the meeting on the 29th, we were told the pool was four feet deep.
Yes, that being deeper than the sunshelf, which is only maybe a foot deep.
How long is the sunshelf?
It's, look on the plan, you see the lines on the north end. There's the stairs down to the bottom deck, so the area to the right of that is the sunshelf. It's got a little bit of, you know, a little bit of water in there for people to put their chairs in to sit, that don't want to get fully submerged.
And then steps down to the.
Then steps down to a four-foot section, correct.
The new north ramp, you said it would be six inches of the concrete, with maybe some rebar or something, to facilitate emergency vehicles, be it police, fire, or whatever. Is there going to be a calculated weight limit?
I have not proposed any. They've designed it similar to a driveway apron for retail sites, for residential vehicles that come up over sidewalks. You increase the sidewalks to six inches in thick, as opposed to a four-foot. You throw some reinforcing inside of it to withstand the increased loads. Typically, at a retail center, something like that, you'd have larger vehicles, tractor trailers driving over them, you know, emergency vehicles, same kind of thing. So we don't expect it to be a heavily-used vehicular path, but it can accommodate the occasional vehicle on it for that use.
Thank you.
But let's say that a fire truck had to, you mentioned that, worst-case scenario, a fire truck had to go in there. Could we design that walkway to accommodate HS20 loading, heavy vehicles?
I can, I can actually look into it, see. I would think the six inches would handle it as well, but I can look into it further. I confirm that. Thank you.
So, and also in the inside memo, I think it acknowledged that no further signage was submitted as part of the application. So you guys are still not proposing public access signage, signage indicating what the building is, numerical signage?
There is actually a sign that was shown on our landscaping plans that Mr. Bauer can discuss when he comes up. That is something that we're putting up for the board's consideration and discussion, subject to perhaps comments on how we may be able to better address what you're looking for. But Mr. Bauer can address that.
The four lights along the east wall, you say they are 20 feet tall? And the wall itself is seven?
Seven and a half, I think, to that top.
Seven and a half.
That's the ultimate height.
So once those lights are on, you don't expect any spillage out onto the boardwalk?
There will be some. The lighting calculations on Sheet 7 of 14 have provided the analysis of what would spill over, and those levels are, my eyes are going bad. Are less than a half a foot canal that would get onto the boardwalk. And it's through those, you know, potentially the opening, because as Mr. Hendall testified, the first six and a half feet would be solid, and the seven and a half would be the vertical slats that are extending up. And so there would be the extra foot that would have, you know, some openings in it every so often. So any light spillage that would come would come from there, but it's very limited coming onto the boardwalk area. You know, we've attempted to screen them and shield them and angle them in a way that we would limit those from happening. But sometimes, just no matter where you put a light, sometimes you're going to have some little bit of a light that overs. We're trying to minimize. And most of the light spillage on the plan, if you look at it, are down around the 0.1, 0.2 range, especially, you know, away from the light fixtures. Only at the light fixtures you have a little bit higher levels.
And just to follow up on that, the, I know the boardwalk plans for the city have not yet been finalized, but in the plans that have been submitted to the DEP for CAFRA compliance, do they have the boardwalk lights in this vicinity anyway?
We did show potential, possible future lights on the boardwalk that we anticipated might be included. And they are located along, you know, same boundary line. And they are the similar fixtures that are on the north and south, the classical globes, I believe, mounted with a height of 18 feet with the light fixture. So they're actually going to spill over possibly into our site a little bit as well. They would illuminate the boardwalk, and really, that would be where the illumination would come from, not from our site.
I had a question about, it's not something you testified to, but it's just related to utilities, and this is ignorant on my part, but pool maintenance and water, in terms of, it goes to sanitary if you're draining the pool?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't impact stormwater at all?
No.
Is that, is anything any different if it's salt versus?
I don't believe so.
Either way, same effect?
I believe so, because if they could always, if you put salt now, they could always change it over to chlorine later on, so they don't want to have, if you do it one way, you're kind of tied in. So I believe it's all connected into the sanitary for safety purposes. And it's accounted for in all the permits through the town for sewer capacity, as well as, you know, any other, any other permits related to sewer that would be needed.
Does the board have any other questions? No? Professionals have any other questions? All right, I'm just going to propose that we take a short recess, and then we'll continue on. Five minutes, please.
Motion, do we have to do a motion? A motion for a recess.
Five minutes, second.
Aye.
Do you have a motion?
I think we need a motion to open up again?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Here.
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 Here. All right, we're ready for cross-examination?
Of course, exactly. Okay, where do you want me to go?
Wherever you want.
Wherever.
I'm not going to ask the applicant that question.
Do you want to grab a chair?
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Stuart Lieberman. I represent the objectives in this matter. Mr. Delaney, I have some questions for you initially concerning the stormwater system. You're aware of the best management practices, right?
Yes.
And you know that the best management practices is constituted by the DEP concerning the method in which stormwater systems are supposed to be designed. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And you know that they constitute law, that they've been promulgated by the agency. Is that correct?
They've been adopted as guidelines in designing stormwater systems.
And you understand that if you depart from the guidelines, you need to be able to state the reason for the departure as part of your work. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And you understand that if you're using a retention system, that there are storm sewer boring's that have to be undertaken underneath the location of the boring's? Isn't that, under the location of the recharge device? Isn't that correct?
It is correct if a product is defined as a major development.
Okay, that's correct. But also, it's correct if you're relying on a recharge system. Isn't that correct?
I believe the BMP manual and the stormwater management regulations relate to major developments only, and don't, if it's not a major development, wouldn't require so. As I testified, if you use the 76% impervious coverage conservative approach that we did, which provides 0.44 acres, we'd be a major development on the property. If we removed the pool deck, we would be, not be classified as a major development.
Okay, in this case, though, you're operating as if you're a major development, correct?
I made that from a conservative standpoint, yes.
Okay, now, in this particular case, you are relying on recharge for 6,000 square foot of the impervious surface, more or less. Isn't that correct?
I am providing a system that will allow recharge to occur for the roof drains of the building.
Okay, so what I asked was correct. The answer was yes.
I'm not relying on it. I am providing it as an additional benefit to the development.
Well, wait a second. When you say you're not relying on it, part, you have a stormwater system which incorporates recharge, correct?
I am not required under the regulations to recharge. I am doing it as an additional benefit to the site.
Okay, good. So the system that you have put into place does not have any sewer boring's that were taken underneath where the basin, where the recharge basin's going to be, does it?
There were three soil boring's that were prepared back in 2018 in the vicinity of the underground pipe.
Okay, now, when you say boring's, they weren't boring's in the sense of a soil boring that one undertakes for the purpose of installing a recharge basin, were they?
They were not test pits, they were soil boring's.
And they were, and the difference is that test pits are of the nature that, for example, one uses when installing a septic system. Isn't that correct? They're roughly the same.
Yes.
And that's not what you did. What you did were, you had engineers do geotechnical sampling in order to determine the integrity of the soils for the project. Isn't that correct?
I did not have them do anything. The applicant contracted for that.
Okay, and so it's fair to say that as we sit here today, the storm, the soil, the types of test pits that are anticipated under the best management practices have in fact not been undertaken in the area where the basin's going to be?
In strict compliance, no.
Okay. And you also know that you have to have two foot of separation between the top of the stormwater and the bottom of the infiltration devices? Isn't that correct?
That is not correct. The two-foot separation is from the seasonal high-water table to the bottom, to the lowest point of the infiltration facility.
Okay, and the, when this work was undertaken, was an assessment made to determine whether or not you were, whether or not you were at seasonal high-water?
My understanding, from speaking to geotechnical engineers in my career, and especially most recently, the seasonal high-water table and the estimation of that is seasonally dependent upon when the boring's are done. Ideally, boring's are, you want to take your boring's or test pits in the earlier part of the year, through April, February, March, April, possibly even early May, because that's when the seasonal high-water table is at its potentially highest on a property. And from my discussions with geotechnical engineers about this, that water table elevation, seasonal water table also tends to coincide with the water table elevation on the site.
The months on that were when, the preferable months?
February through April, possibly into early May.
And you've observed the data from that, from that, those pits when they were undertaken, those boring's when they were undertaken? You personally observed them?
The information that was submitted here is one of the exhibits. I reviewed that information when it was provided to me.
Okay, did you actually see the data from the onsite work that was undertaken?
I was not present during that time.
It's not what I asked you. Did you actually see the data that was generated from the work that was undertaken at that time?
The only thing I saw were the logs that were produced as a result of the exploration.
Okay, and the month of that was when, please?
April of 2018.
And you understand that if you have a deficiency in terms of the depth to groundwater, that affects the manner in which the infiltration basin will operate, right? Isn't that correct?
If I don't have the separation, I would have to modify the design to provide the required separation.
Well, that's because the groundwater would infiltrate, would displace the water that was trying to be recharged into it. Isn't that accurate?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And you can't state that based on your own work product that there in fact will be two feet of separation here, can you? You're not in a position to make that testimony within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty, are you?
Based upon the information in the logs that was provided to me, and the time of when the logs were taken, they indicate a depth of the water of 10 feet below existing grade. And the location of the pipe system, infiltration system that I'm, that's being proposed here is on the low end of the site, as I testified to, at elevation 11, 12 existing. Therefore, the seasonal high, or the water table that they determined, would be down at elevation one or two. Bottom of my infiltration system is five and a half, two to five and a half, or three and a half feet, so there is some room there. I felt comfortable that was proposed. It would meet any further testing or investigations that would be provided on the site.
When the work was undertaken, the stormwater system had not yet been designed. Isn't that accurate?
That is correct.
And did you superimpose your discharge basin drawings, every discharge basins, over any site drawings indicating where the samples were taken to ensure that the samples were underneath the basin? Have you done that yourself?
I did not do that myself, no.
Okay, who did that?
The geotechnical engineer would have done that. I don't know if he provided that information.
Are you able to?
In the final format.
Are you able to state, within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty, that the soil analysis that was undertaken for the geotechnical review in fact represented soils that will be underneath the discharge basin in the system?
So repeat that again?
Are you able to state, within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty, that the soil log results that you reviewed constituted results from soils taken underneath where the discharge basin will actually be situated?
Directly underneath, no.
I don't.
They were in the vicinity of, from my review of, from information provided, they were in the vicinity of the proposed recharge system.
You understand that the best management practices in fact require that samples be taken underneath the discharge basin, not in the vicinity? You understand that?
I believe that allows some flexibility to move, not to be directly underneath it. It can be off to the side, just as the septic systems allow some of them to be pushed out in case the system has to be moved.
When there's resistance also. So in other words, if you sense some kind of resistance in the soil such that a sample right underneath where the basin's going to be is impracticable, there's going to be some resist, did you, there's going to be some opportunity to go to the side? None of that existed here, isn't that correct? You're not aware of any of that?
I'm not aware of any of that.
Right. Now, in terms of the, in terms of the soil samples, did they indicate the composition of the soils? In other words, what information were you able to, or can you provide today in terms of the com- you provide today in terms of the composition of the soils?
They did the, they did a description of the soils for each sample depth that they provided through their boring logs, and those as submitted into the logs that were submitted, there were several, most of it consisted of, into the depths that would affect the stormwater basin down to that 10 feet, sand with some traces of silt in boring 1, boring 2, so again, some sand, some little gravel, traces of some silt, and very similar to in boring 3 as well.
Now, you indicated that there was some gravel there, this was a redeveloped area, isn't that correct?
The, yes, I believe so.
Can you tell me what information you have concerning whether, which would answer this question, has there been any fill installed in the area where this discharge basin is going to be situated? Underneath it, right underneath it, has there any historic fill or industrial fill as a result of the reuse?
I didn't, I'm not aware of any, so it was not in the information I reviewed.
Right, so the answer is, you can't testify within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty as to whether there is any redeveloped fill in the area underneath where the discharge basin's going to be, you can't testify, can you?
No, I can't, because the information was not provided to me, and I did not perform the logs.
You understand that in a redevelopment area, one of the reasons why recharge isn't necessarily required is because of the propensity for the fill to be historic reused fill, isn't that correct?
I'm not aware of that reasoning, no.
Okay, but in this particular, you understand that if the soils constitute reused soil, in other words, what's your understanding, in other words, if it's industrial reused soil, it could have gravel in it, isn't that correct?
If it's a developed site, it could have fill, it could have gravel, it could have remnants of old structures, there could be various materials underneath a site that is being, that was developed at one point, that is being redeveloped.
And the quality of the soils in that regard would directly impact the ability of those soils to recharge, wouldn't it?
Certainly.
And you can't state within a reasonable degree of scientific certainty before this board today as to whether any problems associated with the recharge system that you designed will exist or will not exist because of the quality and nature of the soils underneath the canyon?
All I can say is based upon the information that was provided to me in the soil boring logs, the material underlying it, existing of sand with traces of silt and gravel, seems to me to be better than most possible redevelopment sites with large amounts of other types of materials, more restrictive, more restrictive materials or more materials that would not be suitable.
You understand that in redeveloped sites, often the nature of the soils differs greatly depending on, it could be just within a few feet, isn't that correct?
To any geotech engineer, they say the only thing they can guarantee is the soil boring directly when they test it, so, yes.
Now, your stormwater system indicates that you have, you've taken into account the 25-year storm event, right, isn't that what you, that's what you wrote?
I did that for sizing the roof leader system, yes.
Okay, what, you understand that there are other storm events, including 100-year storm event, what happens to your system in the event of storms that exceed the 25-year storm event, what happens?
What happens to the underground system or the roof drain system?
What happens to the water?
Which system?
Well, I don't care the system, I'm asking you, when you have water coming off the, coming off the impervious site as a result of a storm that exceeds the 25-year event, what happens to that water?
There are two situations here, the roof drains for conveyance pipe design is required to comply, use a 25-year storm for proving capacity in the system. For the recharge system, the 25-year storm, you also have to look into the 100-year storm, so I would not analyze the conveyance system for a 100-year storm, because it's simply, any of the root, any of the existing inlets and systems along the roadways are not analyzed that way, they're sized for a 25-year event. Stormwater detention and retention infiltration basins are analyzed for up to the 100-year storm event.
Okay, so, then let's get into the nature of the municipal system that you rely on. First of all, if I understand your testimony, that system, first of all, the system was designed by Shua De Palmer roughly 20 years ago, is that correct?
That's my understanding, based on the plans that I had reviewed previously.
And the stormwater regulations that were in place when this system was designed aren't the same stormwater regulations that we have in place now, are they?
Regulations change all the time.
And they've become more stringent, especially along the coastal areas, isn't that correct?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no.
And the, you've indicated that you believe that the receiving, the pipes, the receiving pipes that you're relying on for all but 6,000 gallon, square feet, all but 6,000 square feet of this roughly 19,000 square foot of impervious surface, if I remember numbers right, most of that's going to go into the municipal system, isn't that correct?
Only 6,000 square feet is going to go into the municipal system, the rest of it will be sent down into the underlying soils. The only part, the only part that will be going into the municipal system will be the building, the covered portion of the building through the roof drain system, and the two walkways on the north and south ends that flow overland to the inlets.
How many square feet is that?
The inlet system itself, the building is about 6,000 square feet, and I think, believe the two, if I remember my numbers.
If I remember, let me just do it this way.
About 3,000 square feet for the concrete.
The recharge basin's handling 6,000, isn't it?
It is only handling the runoff from the roof drains from the building, the proposed building.
Just the recharge system, the rest is going into the pipes? The rest is going into the municipal system, isn't that correct?
The rest of it being the concrete on the north and south sides are flowing overland by sheet flow into the existing inlet and pipe network system in Ocean Avenue.
Okay, fine, now, what have you done, this was one of the questions that the municipal engineer asked you too, what have you done to ensure that that system exists today with whatever build outs have already been connected to it and are anticipated, what have you done to ensure that it can handle the water that it's going to seep from this project?
As I testified to, the waterfront redevelopment plan permits up to 90% impervious coverage throughout the entire waterfront plan, waterfront area, which you can look as a whole, you could also, needed to apply individually to each site, in this case, we could do that, if at a 90% impervious coverage, we are at 76%, so we would actually be, you know, based on the original design, that may have assumed the site is 90% permitted, we are 14% less impervious, which would then have a less runoff going to that system. How, and I also testified to, we were being conservative with that 76%, and that actually, if you included the roof, the pool deck as a non-impervious surface, because it allows water to drain off it and directly into the soils underground without going to the municipal system, the site would be under 30% at 29% runoff, which is substantially less than 90% impervious, would be a substantial reduction to any flow that would enter the municipal system.
Okay, so, you understand that there's a difference between looking at something from a design perspective and looking at something that's already been constructed and determining what its capacity is, right, you understand that those are two different analyses, right?
Yes.
Okay, what is, what have you done to ensure that this system, which was built 20 years ago, and is out there in Asbury Park right now, surfacing a whole lot of stormwater, what have you done to ensure that it in fact can take the water, all but 6,000 square feet of it that's going to come from your project, what have you done to ensure that it can take it?
As preparation to other developments in Asbury Park that I've, that I've been involved with, I did review the original designs for the stormwater system on the site, for the entire development, had the documents, this site was allotted with two roof drains, two connections from the inlets in the street up to service the proposed property, so it was contemplated that development on the site would be running through those pipe systems, and as I says, I mentioned, with the reduction of impervious surfaces on here based upon the anticipated impervious surface that could be generated from, or proposed on this site, we're substantially less, and that itself would be a reduction in runoff to the municipal system.
Okay, you haven't done, how's the system working right now, the municipal stormwater system, current stormwater system, how's it working?
I have not witnessed it during any substantial rain events, I have not been made aware of any flooding or backing up in front of my property or along the routes that the discharge pipes take down to the, to the outfall.
Well, you know that the discharge pipes, even if you're relying on a design basis only, which I certainly don't think is a good idea, but even if that's all you're relying on, you know that they can't handle anything more than a 25-year storm, isn't that correct?
That is industry standard.
Okay, so, so you know right off the bat that when we have a storm that's greater than a 25-year storm, which seems to be every week now, that it's going to surcharge?
That, that and every other pipe in the state of New Jersey, except DOTs, which are designed to a 10-year storm.
But if you did more infiltration on the site, we wouldn't have that problem, is that correct?
I'm not required to do any infiltration on the site by the regulations, there was a recommendation by the TRC that we try to incorporate some recharge, and that's what the applicant has, in the plans that's submitted, have done.
I want to talk to you about the design features that you gave testimony about before, some of the design features, and what I want to do is focus on the design features that you incorporated, or that your firm incorporated, that are specific to or peculiar to this use as a beach club, that's what I'm going to focus on. So, when we look at the engineering, we know that you have, you know that in terms of pools, we've had several regulations, safety regulations that have gone into effect in the last year, isn't that correct?
I'm not a pool designer, so I'm not aware of all the regulations related to them.
Well, when you say you're not a pool designer, you engineered a pool club here, didn't you?
I did the engineering outside of the facility, the architect and other professionals on the design team handled the pool design, building design, the interior features, I show, my role is to connect those improvements from the exterior of the facility to the public right of ways.
Well, excuse me if you would, but you testified, in fact, that the lighting that was undertaken in the area of the pool was specifically designed to anticipate and address the new pool requirements, that was you, your testimony, isn't that correct?
I testified to that based on information provided to me by our professional lighting consultant on our design team.
So you don't consider yourself to be an expert in lighting or lighting engineer?
I am knowledgeable, I'm knowledgeable in lighting, I'm not an expert, and I'm not, I'm not a lighting engineer, no.
What else was done at the site in order to address the recent pool regulations that you're aware of, that your other professionals have told you about? You dealt with the lighting, what else?
I'm sorry, just to object here, so, our architects came in and gave testimony as to the, how the interior of the site was designed, including the pool, and he's been here and testified as to that, and Mr. Delaney has now testified that he's participated in designing the site, but questions about the actual pool design were appropriate perhaps for the architect.
I don't mean the pool design, I mean the structure and the surroundings in light of the pool use, for example, part of the testimony that we heard tonight was that the lighting was specifically designed to meet the 2018 pool illumination requirements that the state passed, I want to know whether or not any other, that you're aware of any other engineering features associated with this project that relate to the 2018 public pool requirements, other than the lighting that you testified about?
I am not.
Okay, now, you've also given testimony about the, the ability of this structure to withstand storm events, you've given some testimony about that, isn't that correct?
I did not give any testimony about the ability to withstand a storm event, I simply testified to the elevations that we required to comply with, in terms of flood elevations and FEMA requirements.
And that's because FEMA focuses on wave action and flooding, right?
In a V-zone, yes.
Yes, and so what I want to know is this, you're aware of strong winds that associate, associated with these storms as well, right?
I have to object, when you say these storms, it seems like a very broad and ambiguous question.
Well, sandy kinds of storms, these nor'easters and hurricanes and events that we've seen in the last few years, you're aware that it's not just flooding that's an issue, it's not just water action, but it's wind, correct?
Storms such as that, you have both water and wind aspects, yes.
That's right, and so what I want to know is, you're the engineer, from an engineering standpoint, tell the board, if you would, what did you do to address the wind concerns associated with the storm events that you just described?
I have done nothing based on wind, related to the wind, as that is a structural aspect that would be handled by our structural engineer.
Okay, but as part of the team, well, there's engineering components to it though, right, there's an architectural component, but there are engineering components associated with ensuring that a building is able to withstand hurricane or near hurricane forces, aren't there hurricane, aren't there engineering functions?
As I mentioned, that would be, that would be designed by our structural engineer, not outside of my purview.
Oh, so, so you're not here to testify about the structural aspects of this project?
I'm here only as the site civil engineer for the, for the improvements around the perimeter of the building.
Is, are we going to hear, is there going to be a witness who's going to tell us about the structural aspects of this to ensure that it doesn't blow away during a heavy storm, someone going to tell us about that?
The planning board, the planning board's jurisdiction does not include the uniform construction controls, it is not a body, this body does not review plans in accordance with the UCC, that is done in, at the time that building permits are submitted, it is not for this board to decide, so no, there will not be a structural engineer that testifies here this evening, but all of the appropriate professionals who would prepare such plans in connection with the building permit will do so at the time of building permit submission.
Does the board also, does the planning board also have within its purview and function the responsibility of ensuring FEMA compliance? Because you gave testimony tonight about FEMA compliance, in fact, there was at length testimony about that, yet that's not within the board's ordinary responsibility, is it?
I gave them information related to the elevations that we would be designing towards to comply with FEMA, to answer any, some questions that were raised by the board and the public at last, at the last meeting, they, once again, as I understand it, the building department and city floodplain manager would have ultimate review of any code compliant issues related to FEMA.
Going back to the engineering that you undertook of this quote "beach club", and I put that in quotes, you indicated that there is no direct access, this was your testimony, that there is no direct access between this club and the beach, isn't that your testimony?
Yes.
And in fact, the beach club, as you call it, doesn't sit on the beach, correct?
Correct.
And doesn't in any manner depend on the beach for its internal use, as far as you know, isn't that correct?
It is designed to stand by itself?
It's designed to stand by itself, and the focal point of this building that you engineered, isn't the beach, but the pool that's inside, isn't that correct?
First of all, I did not engineer the building, I only did the site as I talked about, and this is a private development by the applicant, that the applicant is proposing to supplement the uses throughout the waterfront redevelopment area and work with the beach and boardwalk and other uses.
One last thing I want to ask you about that, you used the word "private development", what did you mean when you told the board that this is a private development, what did you mean by that?
It is being constructed by a private developer with private money, not by, not by the city or using public funds.
And also, it's restricted to the members, isn't that correct?
I never said anything about that.
Do you know about that?
I do not.
In terms of the lighting, you're aware that part of this structure sits in front of an existing condominium complex, aren't you?
Yes.
From a site engineering perspective, how much, are you able to tell this board how much of that existing condominium's view, existing view of the ocean is going to be obscured by this development, once it's constructed?
That testimony was provided by the architect last meeting.
And, do you know?
Testimony was provided by the architect.
And in terms of the lighting that you talked about, there is some shielding that's taking place, correct?
Yes.
But the shielding will not accommodate all of the lighting, and so there's going to be some lighting that's going to get away, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I have to object, what is- Yeah, I have to object, what is get away?
There's going to be some lighting that's going to not be shielded and it's going to be visible from outside the project.
Which lights in particular are you talking about, or which, which areas of the site are you talking about?
How about the upper deck?
Those lights will have shields and they direct the light downward.
And what percentage of the lighting will be in fact shielded by those shields?
I don't have that number.
You don't have that number. Are you able to tell the board, so you know that the adjoining condominium isn't all eight floors, you know that some of it's four floors and some of it's eight floors, you know that, don't you?
It varies in floor heights, yes.
Okay. Do you know, for example, what type of hue will be present from this building, let's say from floor eight of the adjoining condominium?
I do not, but the architect provided information about that last hearing.
Well, you provided lighting testimony, that was you.
I did.
Okay. So, my question is, based on the testimony you provided, what kind of lighting are people going to see in the condominium from the eighth floor? Do you have any testimony about that?
All I can testify to is that the lights have been directed to point down towards the deck of both the roof and the pool. There are shields on those lights on the upper ends to prevent anybody in elevated positions, whether it's the third, fourth, fifth, eighth, whatever floor across the way, from potentially seeing those fixtures.
When are the lights going to be turned off, do you know?
I do not.
Let me check mine out, see if I have any other questions. You're familiar with the concept of tailwater inside the existing drainage system, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
And, and would you describe for the board what tailwater means?
Tailwater is existing flow within a pipe that when another pipe enters it could potentially impact the rate at which the water from the incoming pipe enters the existing pipe.
And an analysis in terms of one undertaken by one who typically designs a stormwater system relying on pipes for conveyance would at a necessity also anticipate an evaluation of the tailwater and its impacts, wouldn't it? Would you just, would you provide to the board the tailwater analysis that you undertook for this project?
I did not perform any tailwater analysis on this impact because the pipes that we are connecting into are the upstream most ends of the pipe run.
Now, the, the, this, well, when you say it's the most upstream portion, are you telling me that if there are tailwater impacts down gradient, downstream, it's not going to have any impacts on upstream? Is that what you're saying?
It potentially could, but there are, there's no upstream pipes additionally flowing through our site, so we did not account for tailwater.
You didn't account for it. So, you're not able to advise the board what impact would be anticipated as a result of this tailwater? You can't say within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty, what if any impact's going to occur, can you?
The impact that I would expect because it's a tidally influenced system is that any water that would be within this system would, would have opportunities to discharge during those fluctuations in the tides, similar to other, other water bodies such as rivers that are tidally influenced.
Right. That's commonly the cause, but that doesn't negate the fact that, that the tailwater still had an interim impact, isn't that correct?
It could potentially.
Now, are you familiar with something called, and I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not that familiar with it, so don't, but are you familiar with something called the Delmar, the Delmar view unit hydrograph, method of doing stormwater analysis?
I am familiar with the Delmarva hydrograph, yes.
Do you have an understanding that the best management practices require that that system, excuse me, that that mode of analysis be used in estimating runoff volumes in, in certain areas, in the coastal plain areas of New Jersey?
It is recommended that the coastal plain areas use the Delmarva unit hydrograph. However, there are the, some information and guidance that was provided by the NRCS, I believe, for New Jersey, indicated that if a site is being redeveloped or an urbanized area, that the, the standard unit hydrograph, which is an acceptable method for those specific instances.
Do you know whether the Department of Mineral Protection has amended its best management practices to coincide with that view?
I do not.
I don't have any further questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. We'll open it to a public question. Please, if you, if you have a question, please keep it to whatever was presented. We would need your name and the address of where you live.
Good evening. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Could you go back to the site plan, please, to the very first slide that shows the building?
This one is the survey, is that what you're looking for?
The survey, the site plan, the survey? Yeah. That'd be fine, yeah.
This one?
What is the western frontage of the building? What's the length of the building along the western side?
It occupies most of the frontage. About 215 feet.
About 215, okay. And how wide is the lot on that frontage?
248 feet, as I testified.
Okay. So, that accounts for the 215-foot wide public easements?
Correct. And there's, and the building is stepped about a foot and a half on each side off of those easements.
Okay. Across the street to the west, the condominium complex, what is the frontage of that building?
I don't know.
And why is that not as part of your analysis?
Because that's, I'm not designing anything across the street.
Okay. Just a point of order, at the last meeting, I had asked the architect the same question and I was directed to the planner.
It was not for, for lighting?
No, no.
For what?
Alignments, property alignments. There was a great, there was a lot of testimony by this witness about setbacks and property alignments on the site. And I'm wondering what the relationship to this building is to the one to the west in terms of how the frontages line up with each other?
I remember that question. I recall that. And I guess they were going to-
I was directed to this witness at that time.
In terms of the frontages, the, there would, the relationship is not, would not be the same, would not be held under the same constraints. We have a 20-foot easement along the front of our property, which is our constraint. I do not, I'm not aware of any easement along their property. I believe they could build all the way up to the property line, but I don't know the distance from the curb line to the property line for that, for that site.
I'm not referring to the easement between Ocean Avenue and the building. I'm referring to the, the sightline alignment between the two buildings viewing from west to east toward the beach.
So, could you just, just, just for my own identification, what are you specifically looking for? I get sightline, but what do you, I mean, are you clear as to what the question is?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to reach into testifying, I'd like to ask questions.
I understand, I just, I just, I just wanted to make sure that the question is clear, that's all.
Yes, and honestly, we did, we noted your question last time and I thought that you were asking about the setbacks along Ocean Avenue on the Ocean Ave side, which is what Mr. Delaney testified to.
Let me, let me go a different route. You had testified earlier extensively about CAFRA compliance. How was CAFRA compliance done with a project like this? The permit is very old, correct? When was the permit issued?
Early 2000s.
Early 2000s? And there was testimony that, that permit is still valid. However, I heard some testimony from you that this particular site will undergo an additional review for CAFRA compliance? How does that work?
Perhaps I can jump in there. So, as part of CAFRA compliance, the plans for this particular site, and I apologize, I'm sort of speaking away from you, but not on purpose, just trying to get picked up by the microphone. As part of CAFRA compliance, we need to submit the plans for this individual site to the DEP to confirm that they are consistent with the permit that was previously granted.
Okay. So, so who at this juncture has reviewed those requirements to find out ahead of submitting to the state whether this project complies with CAFRA? In effect, you'd want to know before submitting it whether you're good to go, right?
Yes. The, the design team consisting of the architect, myself, the planner, landscape architect and all the other design team members, as well as the applicant and our attorney have reviewed regulations related to this project to, that we feel are, the design is compliant and we have submitted to the DEP for their review and hopefully approval and acceptance that is the fact.
Okay, thank, thank you. So, your expertise is with the site plan, the layout?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just going to run, get my tablet for a moment. Okay. Are you familiar with the CAFRA chapters or sections that are specifically spelled out in the redevelopment plan?
I'm aware of them, I do, I have not memorized them.
Okay. Are you, does one called scenic corridors refresh your memory?
Yes.
Natural resources and scenic corridors, okay. Are you aware that that specifically states that the ends of the flare streets are to remain unobstructed? That there are supposed to be open scenic corridors at the end when constructing any building between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk?
I'm aware of that and I believe the design complies with that.
Okay. Back to the frontage, it's 215, you said?
The building is 215 approximately, the frontage is 248.
Okay. And you're not aware of how the frontage of the building across the street, how large that is, are you?
I'm not.
Okay. So, how can you confirm that there's no obstruction of a sightline if you don't know what the building across the street width is north to south?
If I may, Mr. Delaney, is this the curb line for the block across the street?
That is.
And is this over here the curb line for the block across the street?
That is.
Okay. And is our building within those curb lines for the block across the street?
Yes, it is.
The curb lines don't matter, it's the building size that matters.
If I, if I understand the regulation correctly and, and, and don't, don't, I'm not quoting it, and what we're trying to be able to find, and Mr. Hughes might be able to touch on this further later down the road, we have to maintain a corridor through the site. I don't, do not believe there is a specific width of each corridor that has to be maintained along those areas. That's, that's my understanding of it. We are maintaining a corridor because we're building up to where we can build, maintain the 15-foot easement and the two properties to both the north and south of us are, I believe, are, are public property that are, that are not proposed for development.
Okay. You had testified earlier that you're allowing the easement lines to dictate your setback.
That is correct.
And you're now testifying that the actual sightline from the west of this property has not been considered?
I did not say that at all. I just, I just said that with, in our estimation, the sightlines are, have been provided based upon the design we proposed.
Okay. Let, let me propose a hypothetical then. If, if the building across the street were 200 feet wide and your building is 215 feet wide, isn't that an obstruction?
It depends on where you measure the sight, sight views from. If you're measuring along a building, potentially, if you're measuring at a different point, if it's not along the building, that is the requirement of the sightline, then no.
So, your belief, your belief is that a sightline can vary depending if you're standing in the middle of the street versus sighting along a building line? What's the generally accepted way of determining a sightline along a building line, isn't it?
Yeah. It is dictated typically by regulations on where those sightlines are to be measured from. I'm not aware that this is measured, is, the sightlines for this are measured along the building lines.
Okay. Regarding the lighting testimony that we gave, you had specified specific lighting to light up the easements, that is the public sidewalks. Could you go back to that slide that shows those fixtures? The green, yeah, the, the green line there. Could you go to the fixture that will be in that locality?
Next page.
Okay. You had testified that these wall fixtures will not provide lighting outside the boundaries of the easement area, is that correct?
I did not say that, no.
Okay. What do, what is the actual testimony about these lights? How, how visible will they be to the general public?
I said these lights would provide illumination along the walkway that might, might approach over the property line to the north and they'll supplement the pole-mounted area light to provide safe illumination levels along the walkway.
Is it possible to zoom in on that particular green circled area there to show the manufacturer's depiction of the light fixture? Oh, I think you skipped, I think you skipped ahead a slide or two.
Two slides.
There we go, the green one. Could we zoom in on the manufacturer's depiction of the fixture in the green square there?
All the way down the bottom.
There we go. Okay, so move left a little bit to show the light, the actual picture of the light fixture? Nope, that's not it.
Picked up two, two sheets of light. Keep going. Oh, she should be that one, yeah, that one, right there.
Okay, there we go. Can we zoom in on that manufacturer's depiction?
I hope we lost it again.
Sorry. It's hard to zoom in, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I guess, I guess dragging with the mouse isn't conducive to this particular-
Go to your left a little.
This one?
Go this way. I think I just went down, no. Yeah.
Ah, there we go. There we go. Okay. So, this is the fixture that you're proposing to put on the north and south facades to illuminate the public walkways, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It appears from the manufacturer's data sheet here that this is a visible light source from, from underneath and from the side. There's a, it's an unshielded bulb, is that correct? Clearly, I can see the source of the light.
Yeah, no, I'm seeing the source, yes, the picture shows that, yes, I'm not, I'm just not sure that the fixture itself does not have the options available, does not have some kind of a recessed option or a shielded option.
Okay. Would you say it's, it's not advisable for good lighting practices to see the source of the light?
Typically, you would not want to see the source, that is correct.
Okay. So, what are you going to do to mitigate this particular fixture?
The, as I testified to, these, these lights are only 10 watts each on LED fixtures. I believe, and my math is correct or my memory is correct, the equivalent to that may be something of like a 40 or 50 watt.
I'm not interested in the wattage.
I understand that, 60, 60 watt bulb, that would be in your lamp table next to your house. It's a not significant source of, of light, light glare that would be coming out of the fixture.
Okay. So, equivalent of a 60-watt bulb, a bare bulb? Would somebody have a bare 60-watt bulb sitting in a lamp?
If you're standing directly underneath it or next to it, there would be an impact. But if you're five, 10 feet away, the impact is drastically reduced.
Okay. Let's, just back up a second. You said it was desirable to not see the source of the light. What are we going to do about this fixture to not see the source of that light and only the effect of the light on the sidewalk? Perhaps a shield? A shade? Perhaps a shield, a shade, or a different fixture perhaps?
I guess the question is, has this light been designed to provide safe passage for pedestrians along the accessway?
Yes, it has.
No, that's not my question. What is going to mitigate the glare and seeing the source of the light?
I don't believe, being the wattage that is proposed, the glare that will be generated from the fixture would not be substantial that would impact the pedestrians walking up and down the walkway. Will there be an impact? Of course, there's always an impact when you add something that's not there. But would it be significant that would impair pedestrians? I do not believe so.
You don't believe so.
And the way that it is proposed and the way we have discussed it and designed the light fixtures.
All right, thank you. Regarding signage, which was testified to, isn't there a minimum requirement to have at least a building number on this facility?
I did not testify to signage.
There was commentary about it.
I did not testify to it.
We need to hear that our landscape architect will be addressing signage.
Okay, I think it was, I guess it was you that mentioned signage then in your intro, sorry. Okay, regarding the water for the pool, when the pool is drained for maintenance or cleaning or put into hibernation, where does that water go?
The pool system would be connected to the sanitary sewer system as required.
Okay, and what will meter the flow in order to charge and bill an appropriate amount for the use of our sanitary system as everybody else is required to do?
As part of our approval, we have to include the capacity of the pool in our calculations for determining sewage flow rates from the site that will be reviewed by the city engineer.
Oh, I see, so there will be some sort of agreed-upon gallonage, and whenever the pool is emptied, you'll be billed for that?
The connection fees, if any, that would be required for the site related to sanitary sewage would include any volumes and demands required for the pool.
Well, I'm not inquiring about connection fees, I'm inquiring about usage fees, like every other taxpayer has to pay for the water that goes down the sewer, a sewer charge, not a connection fee.
I don't think there are any special considerations for paying for sewage for the site, whatever everybody else is being charged for theirs, they would be hooking into the same system and being charged.
Okay, so you'll have an independent water meter from the water utility then?
Yes.
And that water will be metered?
Yes.
To fill this pool?
Yes.
And then that will be the basis for the sewer charge?
If that's how the city calculates it, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, just another question about the interior lighting, the poles that you were referring to that are approximately 19 feet high, I believe you said? The small light fixtures that are on there, they are in effect spotlights, are they not? Little focused spotlights between four and five, you had mentioned?
They are individual area lights that will be mounted onto the poles.
Okay, and they will also be shielded or somewhat hidden from view?
They will have a shield over the top of them, and they will be directed downwards to the interior of the facility.
Okay, what about from the side? What about being viewed from the side from people traversing the boardwalk?
From the boardwalk, they wouldn't see them because the lights are directed away from the boardwalk.
Okay, that's your belief in design?
If something is angled away from me, I typically don't see, if the source is here, if the source is facing in a direction opposite of where, from where I'm standing, then I typically would not see a source.
All depends where the bulb and the lens is, correct?
Correct, but if you're walking on the boardwalk, typically the lights are pointing interior, to the interior.
All right, just one last item, then back to the view corridor. So if the architect was not ready to testify about preserving the mandatory view corridor down the flared streets, and you are not prepared to testify about that, who exactly, which of your professionals will be addressing, maintaining the required view corridor at the end of the avenues?
Now that I understand that your question is about view corridors and not about setbacks, we do have our planner, Mr. Hughes, who will be testifying.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Dave Ziegler from Fourth Avenue. Question, you're a civil engineer or a site engineer?
Civil engineer, focused on site development.
Why are you testifying about lighting? Isn't that sort of an electrical engineer duty?
The wiring system for it would do that, the electrical engineer would wire it. The fixtures themselves are either sometimes done by a lighting consultant. In the case of our application, we have, they have a specialized consultant that I've been consulting with and working with to understand the system that they're proposing and offer comments to. There are situations, area lighting for parking lots where I do, I'm involved with the light fixture selection and light designs.
Typically, I lost a restaurant, I had to rebuild, it was a six and a half million dollar restaurant. So I went through all the stuff you guys are doing, but I had an electrical engineer that handled lighting, that knew about women, so it wasn't my civil engineer. He handled, you know, stuff underground, the sidewalks, access, and all the stuff that you've testified about, not lighting.
I'm testifying to the light poles and the fixtures, not to the how it's wired together, and it's in consultation with the lighting professional on our design team that I've been working with.
I can understand testifying about, you know, making sure the sidewalks and the boardwalk have lights, but why are you testifying about the second floor lighting?
Questions were raised, it's part of the, it's part of the application that we provide lighting on the site for the use of the facility, and questions were raised by the board and the public during previous applications and for the previous hearing. As I mentioned, I've worked with and reviewed the lighting design by the lighting consultant and offered suggestions and comments on that design in order to prepare myself to be able to testify on what is being proposed for this application.
Will we have a chance to review this with an actual engineer that's responsible for electric?
Now, when it comes to the wiring of the lights, that is a construction code question, and that's reviewed by the construction department in connection with building permit review.
The other question I have is, you know, I'm familiar with a lot of land and water, and typically you have to put tanks underneath it to help drain the runoff that absorbs through the land. Are you familiar with that?
I am, we actually talked about that, that's the infiltration system that we are proposing for the roof drains.
And how many gallons can that handle?
Gallons, I don't have off the top of my head. I have cubic feet. The system as a whole is able to store a total of nine, just over 900 cubic feet of runoff.
How many cubic feet is your pool?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. But the pool is not connected to that system anyway.
I know it's not, but if you don't drain enough water, your pool's going to pop out of the ground. That's an issue. If you don't drain enough water that comes up to your pool, it's going to pop your pool out of the ground. Do we have perpulation samples?
I'm not understanding the question.
No, you have one person questions, if you have another question, that's fine, you can come up.
If the ocean comes up or excess rainwater comes in, the ground can absorb it and properly drain it back out. If you don't have a proper drainage, your pool is over the cubic footage of what these tanks can handle. What's going to happen when the water and the land gets filled with water, your pool's going to pop out of the ground?
The pool, I believe the architect had testified to this last hearing, the pool will be pile-supported independently of all the structures, designed to meet codes and resistance. So it will be attached to the pile system underneath there to prevent, I believe, what I understand, maybe some uplift of the pool.
That's what water does, it makes other water flow.
Correct, and I think you're talking about maybe if the water table comes up excessively high, yeah, the structural engineer will account for that uplift in their design of the connections to the piles with the pool.
So if there's a 10-foot swell, your pool's just going to stay there?
That's, they'll design in accordance with all typical building codes and FEMA regulations to comply with those, so prevent that from happening.
Correct my statement, you don't know how much cubic feet is in the pool, how much cubic foot of water is in the pool?
I don't personally know, I haven't, I've not calculated that.
Whose specialty is that?
The structural engineer would be handling that with the architect.
The architect also gave the dimensions of the pool, the length, the width, and the depth, so I don't have that math off the top of my head, but it was in the transcript.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
There's a couple of questions about the pool.
Your name, name and address, please.
Rob Taylor, I live on 1501 Ocean Avenue. Right across from you guys. So I'm looking, you acted the pool, the whole map that you started with for the pool's design? Because from what you said before, you talk about FEMA water and what, because of the type of zone we're in, that the water has to be able to move underneath the structure, is that correct? Yeah, the water has to be able to move beneath the structure to wave, to allow for wave action?
There are, if the pool was connected to the building, there would be different criteria associated than if the pool is separate and not connected to the building.
I didn't ask you about the pool, I asked you, does the waves have to go underneath the structure?
I'm getting to that, sir. With the, FEMA does allow pools within their, within the V-zone that are individually pile-supported to extend. They do have regulations that govern this situation, and the pool is being designed in accordance with those regulations.
And you talked about boring samples, correct?
I did.
Were any boring samples done that would allow us to understand if the proper soil is in place to allow for a pool to be supported there?
The pool will be pile-supported, so it doesn't matter what the underlying soils are.
Pardon?
The pool will be supported by piles, it will not be sitting on the existing soil, so it doesn't...
What is supporting the piles?
The piles will be driven into the ground until they, my understanding of it, not the geotechnical structural engineer, the piles would be driven into the ground until a suitable resistance is met that would meet the bearing capacity of the structure it is designed to support.
What happens if the pool fails? We talked a lot about water retention here and that. You've got a pool that is being supported by pilings, the pilings are designed to move by nature, so they don't shear, correct? That's how you design pilings.
I don't know, I don't design pilings.
Then you don't know anything about the borings either?
I didn't, I didn't perform the borings, I just reviewed the information that was provided me from the geotechnical engineer.
So who would know, whether the, who would we talk to about whether or not that the pool can be properly, once supported, with the wave structure, if there's waves, would be able to go underneath the pool? My concern is that you're basically creating a structure, right, that is not going to easily move unless you allow it to break away, right? It's going to be met by a water force, the water force is going to overlap that at some point in time. Now you have chemicals in the pool, no one's discussed about how we're going to take care of the pools. I keep hearing about letting the pool water runoff into the impervious areas yet. I don't understand how you're handling the chemicals in that water that's going to go then into the ground. Usually, they don't allow pools to drain around there for that very reason, because they can't determine what chemicals are in the pool, they all start to be concerned about how chemicals enter the pool and make sure that doesn't happen. So I've got a lot of questions about, you keep mentioning about, with the, you're lighting on impervious coverage and that could get lower if we let the water go through, but you haven't addressed, I think, how that would work.
Well, I didn't address anything about the pool.
Yes, you did, you said that you could have impervious coverage around it, so there you go, you did. So can you, can't you?
I said I didn't, you didn't let me finish, sir. I did not address anything about runoff from the pool going into the ground, I was referring to rainwater that would come from the sky.
And obviously, if we have a large storm, some type of wave action, the water that's in the pool is going to have ocean water come in or rainwater come in, and the pool water is going to come out, it's going to have chemicals in it. What's the plan?
That would be set up by the operations folks for the facility in event of a storm, possibly, they'd have a, they'd have some kind of a system set up where they would possibly drain the pool as necessary to prevent that from happening, or other mechanisms to do that. I am not, I'm not privy to that maintenance and operations of the facility.
So, now the other thing, I think the other gentleman was talking about before is, that pool is really a boat, because it has to be, it has to be able to hold water, correctly? So it has to be able to keep water in, it has to be able to keep water out. And what we were talking about before is if the, if the water table gets high enough, that's going to start to float, and I don't care what you think you've attached it to, the question I have is this, the pilings you're putting it on may be designed to hold it up, what's being designed to keep it down?
The structural engineer looks at all, both uplift from groundwater that comes up, so it does not support as well as any weight from below, so it does not sink. It's all part of the structural design that's handled at the time of building permits.
And we talked about groundwater, you're also talking about any type of water surge just from the ocean?
Yes.
Okay, and that's been considered, right?
The structural engineer is working on that, yes.
Okay, all right. And what's the depth of the pool, is how long?
The deepest point, I believe, is four feet, as the architect testified to.
And how long?
I don't know the overall dimensions. The architect testified to the pool, its construction, how it's being supported, and the size of it last hearing.
So you're going to have, here's my concern, is that you're going to have, at the water level, closer to water level, you're going to have a double-walled, secured structure to pilings that is not going to allow the free flow of water to go through, that's going to become a wall, it's going to create an issue on those pilings, it's going to create a lot more force than I think is being appreciated here.
The pool will be designed in accordance with FEMA regulations, which allows for this situation.
Again, how long's the pool?
I don't off the top of my head.
Who would know?
It was in the record from the architect.
Didn't you change the pool designs, you said at the beginning of the meeting you changed some of that?
The architect addressed that in the last meeting, he testified as to the current length, width, and depth of the pool.
But didn't you say that you changed that?
The width of the pool changed, it got smaller, width was, the length did not change.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, not from the last hearing, it had been originally designed months ago to be wider, but between the last hearing and this hearing, the pool size has not changed.
Okay, all right, all right, that's all the questions I have for now.
All right, we're getting very close to our 10 o'clock mark. What's the consensus here?
Madam Chairwoman, I...
One more.
One more? How many, okay, we have one more question, and then I'll bring us to the 10 o'clock mark.
I would have to ask, though, that there are people in the audience here who waited to ask questions, if there are, I guess, if there's an idea of how many people are waiting.
If you could give me just like some idea of how many, how many people we're talking about?
No, you're going to be here till midnight.
No. We'll take one more, and then we'll carry.
This should be a quick, this should be a quick one, Diana Patet, 321 Sunset Avenue, and it's connected to the pool and the covering around it. And you mentioned that it's a, it's now permeable covering, that's a change. Could you say what the material is, how it's permeable, and is it 100% permeable covering, please?
I believe the architect talked about the decking at the previous hearing, it is not 100% impervial, if there was a deck to walk on, there will have openings within the deck.
And so there will be some water runoff that needs to be handled, and I don't think you mentioned what's going to happen to the water runoff from the decking.
Water runoff from where?
Well, if it's not, if it's not 100% permeable, there's going to be, and if there's a storm or if there's going to be storm surge or whatever, what's going to happen to all the water on the decking?
That water will percolate down through the, travel through the decking to the underlying soils and percolate down into the groundwater.
But if it's not 100%, isn't there going to be still flooding in the area that it won't be able to trickle down with the, at right speed?
The decking allows water to pass through to the underlying soils, the decking itself is not 100% impervious, but there, it's like, it's equated to your, a deck at your house, there's always a, in your backyard, there's always a gap between the boards that allows water to run through, this will function the same way.
Right, I understand that, but again, if you're going to have heavy rain, that will take a long time, and there'll be water, there'll be on the deck that you probably need to clear for guests to come to the pool.
The water will hit the existing soils and percolate, there's capacity to get there, the water will drain down through the water table as through the soil borings that were performed, indicated it's 10 feet deep, so there's efficient area in the, or available space in the underlying soils for that water to percolate down.
Okay, so you seem to be quite confident that there's going to be no issues of flooding around the pool in a storm? Okay.
Okay, we're at the... Okay. We're at the 10 o'clock mark.
Can I just say one thing?
Certainly.
I appreciate the applicant saying that was addressed at the last meeting. There's some people here weren't at the last meeting, and we have so many different packages. I would think, if you guys can't do it, then we have to do it. If somebody asks, like, how big is the pool? I've got 15 maps up here, and I can say it's 25 by 100. So I, I mean, why is it so secretive? Why can't?
It's not, Mary. If you, if you want to take the time, we can pull it up now.
No, okay. Well, I just answered. It's 25 by 100. But I mean, stuff like that, I think it's 21. Okay.
It may be, it's not trying to be secretive. I just, I don't want to say, oh, it's 25 by 100, and because I'm not looking at the map when the architect already testified to it. I'm just trying to create a consistent record.
I'm saying that maybe we're just as wrong as you, and then we should supply the answer. Our professionals.
No.
No?
The applicant has asked the question. The applicant answers the question. If they don't know the answer, and you happen to know it, you can say.
Yeah, but I can't, if this goes on another four meetings, and we say, well, remember the meeting, June 29th? Come on, nobody in their right mind. So if it's a common sense answer, we just give a common sense, right, common sense question. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So this means this application will be carried. I believe that there's, we don't have the amount, enough people to, that can attend a special meeting that you requested. So the next time that we have an opening is August 12th, is our next meeting. So I need a motion to...
Hold on. Right.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Sorry?
I'm wondering, I'm going to be hollow on the 12th. Is there any way to afford to accommodate?
We can go into the September meeting.
You can take, maybe.
Yeah.
There might be a legality issue that may...
Yeah. Is there, is there any way to accommodate a special meeting then if the...
In August, yes.
In August.
Well, yeah, if we have, if you provide some dates in August, just like you provided some for July, we can certainly do that. But I believe, I believe that we're not allowed to do that at this point, because we have to carry, and we have to carry with a date.
Yes, we have to carry a date, but save certain time and place.
And I will say, it is unfortunate, because we did circulate dates today, and August 12th was the date, and Mr. Lieberman did not indicate that he was unavailable until we appeared here this evening. So it is putting the applicant at a disadvantage that when we're going to circulate...
Everybody's being put at a disadvantage. You're asking for special meetings.
Correct. But at the end of...
It's not a scheduled meeting, and we usually don't meet more than once in August. We just have a very difficult time getting forums, because people take vacations.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just indicating that if, if, ahead of time, we did try to address scheduling a meeting, had we known Mr. Lieberman wasn't going to be available on the 12th, and he was copied on the emails, we could have, before today's meeting, put out some dates for August. So it's one of those things that we are trying to make sure everyone's here and seen, but we are also in a position where the people who sat here tonight, who have questions, may have to wait until September to ask them. And that seems like an awfully long wait.
Exactly. Jack legally, please, please, please. We legally have to give a date. If we're going to carry this, we legally have to give a date.
We set up later, then you've got to re-notice.
Then you're going to have to re-notice. So...
Mrs. Sepakel, could we carry to a July date and then carry again to another new special meeting date?
You could, but then everybody's going to have to come here just to hear the date circuit.
And we don't have, we don't have forums, and we don't have our professionals in the July dates, except for July 22nd, which is already here, but we just show up and say to move it.
So September 9th?
September 9th is the next available date that the, that the board is meeting. September 9th.
Hold on. We... Mr. Delaney is not available that day.
And September 23rd's the next day.
Is it, we were hoping to avoid this kind of...
I understand.
So the only other option then would be to carry it to a meeting like July 2nd or July...
No, because our professionals can't be here. We don't have a forum for July 8th. You mean, you mean just to carry it?
That's a question. Could we come back? So the applicant's attorney, or I'm sorry, the objector's attorney has already had an opportunity to question Mr. Delaney. Could we come back on the 12th so that the public can ask their questions to Mr. Delaney?
I don't know.
And Mr. Lieberman perhaps could send someone just to observe, and it is available on television.
August 12th.
August 12th.
That's our normal, that's our normal meeting.
What about the rest of the witnesses?
And then we would carry, since Mr. Delaney is the only one that's not available on September 9th, we then would hold off new witnesses until September 9th.
The same, sir. I defer to the board. I mean, it seems like not an efficient use of the board's time, because if he'd rather probably have another witness go, right?
Well, I just want to make sure that, if you object to it, then...
If you're going to, you're not going to have another witness. You're going to finish up with Mr. Delaney.
If we, if we go on August 12th, we will come to allow Mr. Delaney to be questioned by the public. We will not, on my, we will not...
I'm not going to interfere with that. As long as you have another witness.
No. Good. And then if we can then plan to also be here September 9th, at which point we will bring up our next witness after Mr. Delaney.
So you want to just continue this testimony of the cross-examination of this witness till the...
August 12th.
August 12th. And then you're asking for the matter to be carried thereafter from that date to the night?
That's correct.
Without further notice.
That's correct.
And that's where you'll present the balance of your...
We'll move on to our next witness at that point.
Motion to carry to August 12th without further notice.
Second.
Just for this one witness?
Just for this one witness.
I mean, do we have to specify?
Yes.
Just for this?
It's on the record. I want to limit it then.
Correct.
Just for this one witness.
That's correct. We will...
And then you'd also like us to have a motion to carry your hearing from that date after this witness is finished to September 9th.
That's correct.
Okay, without further notice.
That's your motion.
We have to vote on this one.
We need to vote on the voters.
I'm sorry. So motion to carry to...
Please.
Motion to carry to, yeah, August 12th.
Please, if you have something to say, please. We need to finish this up.
Without, this witness solely, without further notice.
Second.
And we also need, and we consent from you that to extend the time, the end of the board has to deal with the matter of the end of the law.
That's correct, yes.
That's part of, okay, got it. Sorry, Alexis.
Yep. Second. Mike, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to carry to September 9th?
After this witness is finished that night, the matter will be continued to the 9th without further notice.
Motion to carry further testimony, September 9th, without further notice.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.